Galt City Council Meeting Tuesday, March 7, 2023 at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, could we do roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. Next, we will do a silent prayer followed by the flag salute. Madam Clerk, can we do the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, March 10 at 9:00 AM and Saturday, March 11 at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions. Does the council have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. First subject is Mobile Crisis Support Team by Chief Kalanowski.
Excuse me, Mayor, I think we have to report out from closed session.
Oh, yes, sir.
Let me do that. And we, council convening closed session to discuss labor negotiations is listed in on the agenda. Council received information from staff and provided direction to staff. There is no reportable action.
Thank you, sir.
It'll take a minute.
Introduce some folks from the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Group who are here supporting the city of Galt with our mobile support crisis team. As you know, we've talked about this program and our ability to plug into this program for some time. And we have today with us our onsite counselor, who's Christine. And you'll see her throughout the community, working with our officers a couple of days a week, primarily assigned with Officer Jeff Selvi, who is our POP officer dealing with homelessness issues. But the work that Christine does, and her supervisor Jennifer will explain, goes beyond the homeless. It stretches into those folks who have issues with mental health and other crises that they're dealing with in the community, housed or otherwise, and providing those resources to get the support that they need to have more successful outcomes in their interactions with police. So with that, I'll introduce Christine and Jennifer and let them say a few words to you. And if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer them for you. And we'll do some social media postings about the program. And then I'll report back to council in the future about our success with this great group that we work with. So, thank you.
Hi, folks. Thanks for having us. We've been doing, I'm with Sacramento County Behavioral Health. We've been doing mobile crisis throughout the county since 2015. We started out real small. We have the ability to have 11 total teams. Our team in Galt, we've been waiting to start and had the opportunity to have Christine come to be on this team. This team will run in Galt for two days a week and provide support to anyone that is struggling with a mental health crisis or anyone that is in distress. We can go to calls from incomplete calls to barricaded subject calls to provide support and counseling there at the scene, not only to the individual who may be experiencing symptoms, but to family and community members. Christine's able to look whether or not somebody's got a provider, do coordination of care, get them to stabilization resources that we have in Sacramento, the urgent care. We can call on our providers to meet us in the field to support an individual that they have. We can also get them to new resources and coordinate with their medical, their behavioral health, any of the services that they're already receiving. So we are, Christine is assigned to a CIT or Crisis Intervention trained officer. And so they will be out on the beat and triaging calls for service that have a mental health component or may result in some kind of trauma. They'll arrive at the scene, mitigate whatever's going on, and try to get folks the resources that they need. So a day in the life looks like what?
So I've had the great pleasure of being in your city and riding with Officer Selvi, getting to know all the ins and outs of your city. Like, who are your homeless folks? What are your resources? Building those relationships so that in the future, I can support helping link to other resources in the county. I know that, and I understand that homelessness has been a big issue here. And Officer Selvi and I have been going around to some of your nonprofits, coordinating maybe some collaborations so that folks know that there are more places to get support. We've had the opportunity to go out quite a few calls to de-escalate some folks that were in crisis. I think there's a perception that we're going to just whisk people over and put them in the hospital, but really, the goal is to stabilize folks in the field with the supports that they have and get them linked so we can avoid that hospitalization. There are a lot of resources up in Sacramento. I know it's a little bit of a drive, but we're coordinating very closely with our homeless outreach teams and our community support teams so that they can provide some follow-up support to folks. And then because it is kind of a smaller town, I'm really looking forward to building those relationships with the people of your town, the population, so that they can trust law enforcement, they can trust mental health, so they can do some repair work on, from the mental health standpoint. People are really more likely to reach out and ask for help when they need it. So that's kind of what we do.
Any questions?
What brought you to the city and what are you enthused about?
So prior to doing this position, I supervised crisis mental health in a different county. I really liked that, but I really felt like I was better suited to being in the field. I missed the direct contact with people. So a couple of years ago, I came over to Sacramento County. I started up in North Sacramento with the Sheriff's Department. It's been two-plus years up there, building wonderful relationships with deputies in the community up there. As you can imagine, North Sacramento is very intense. The call volume is extremely high. Some of the needs of the folks in the population that live in that area are extremely high. So having done that for our city, learn about some of the resources that are available in Sacramento and really doing a little bit more of that follow-up with folks that may need that.
So we shouldn't get any preconceived notions built up, but at the same time, you are hopeful for what you can do for the city?
Absolutely, absolutely. I do not have a magical wand, so I can't come in and I can't find all housing for all of your unhoused folks. I cannot magically make some of the issues in your city better, but I can hopefully make connections with the folks that are in crisis or struggling so that they can know where to go in the future and so that it's less of a drain on some of the resources of your city. So that hopefully in the future, they know where to reach out instead of calling 911 if they really don't need to.
Thank you. Does City Council have any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick. I understand and certainly appreciate being here on the two days a week to respond to calls is basically kind of a situation where when officers discover some chronic problems when you're not here, that they can kind of put a Band-Aid on them and save them up and bombard you with them when you get back?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. And I do work two days a week in Los Reyes Community College and their PD department. I am available for consult if really need be. Physically, though, I'll be up there two days a week and two days here.
Right. Thank you.
I have a question, too. Sorry. First, thank you for coming down. I know that, I know that the homeless problem and, or the issue, homeless, middle homeless, all of it, maybe is not to the level that you've dealt with in other communities, but a big, a big topic nonetheless, right? One question I get a lot from the community is, when I say, well, we're going to, you know, be getting some help from specialists that'll assist PD, what you guys are doing. One of the questions I get is, how many of the people that you interact with, and maybe you can give me an idea of just so far since you've been here, how many of these people that you interact with are actually interested in what you have to offer them? Or they, I guess, for lack of a better word, are interested in help?
So I would say out of the five, six days that I've been down here, I've only had one person say, no, thank you. And that's going out every day, all day long. Hey, what are some of the needs that you have? How do you need, you need a cellphone? How can I get you connected to somebody that can get you a cellphone, a free cellphone, so that then you can access those services? So folks really do want support. Oftentimes, our homeless folks are so in survival mode that they're not able to take those next steps to access the services that are available. So something that I can do is be that bridge. And I can also reach out to other folks in Sacramento County, that they can also do a follow-up and help those folks get what they need.
What are some of the, what's some of, so far since you've been here, what is one of the most common things that they've asked for? Is it, is it shelter? Or is it, I need a phone or I need to eat? What are, what is the most high thing that you hear the most?
I would say shelter is a big one. Accessing shelter is really very challenging. Some of our systems are designed to be helpful. Unfortunately, there's a lot of barriers, such as needing a birth certificate or an ID. So a lot of our unhoused folks don't have those items. So one of the things that we can do is we can support them accessing, reaching out and finding a place where they can get mail so they can apply for and get their birth certificates, that sort of thing. So housing is a big one. A lot of people would really like drug and alcohol treatment. And they still need to be securing their basic needs, such as housing and food and shelter, before they can begin to deal with the deep mental health issues and whatnot. So that basic needs piece, people really want that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. So that's a brief overview of what's more to come. I think you'll find that the resources that the county's providing will have more needs than they have time, but they'll continue to triage those. I know that Officer Selvi's worked hard with Christine to try to get her up to speed. And I think this is just one more piece of that puzzle that we're trying to build to provide sort of the full suite of services to address some of those more visible problematic issues. And so we look forward to the partnership going forward. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on this item?
Not on this item.
Thank you. Next is receiving Galt Chamber and visiting initiative. But before we get to the actual comments or presentation, there's a couple of comments that need to be made. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a very short statement. Madam Clerk, please note this official record on this meeting. My wife is a non-compensated board member of the Chamber of Commerce. And moreover, she's also not a executive member, which is a nonprofit organization, tax-exempt organization for which I have non-interest, Government Code 1091. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Farmer?
Yes. I as well. Madam Clerk, please note in the official records of this meeting that my wife is also a non-compensated board member of the Chamber of Commerce. She serves on the general board, not the executive board, of this organization, which is a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization for which I have a non-interest as well, under Government Code 1090.5, Section A8. Thank you.
Mr. Splendario?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up quickly on that and just say, both of the members have been advised that they may have a remote interest under Government Code 1090, but they have each determined through independent legal opinions, they do not have a remote interest. And just to make it clear, you know, if there were later determined to have a remote interest, even though it's certainly far from a conclusive matter, any monies to the chamber could be deemed void and require repayment to the city, provided certain factors apply. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is this different than the one we got? Yeah.
While our city clerk gets the presentation pulled up, I first just want to say thank you so much to Mayor Vandenberg, Vice Mayor Sandu, and Councilmembers Farmer, Lozano, and Papino for having us. We're really excited about this initiative and this project, and it's an honor to present it to you guys. Thank you. I'm going to test the clicker real quick. Did you, the on button's on the side? There we go. And it vibrated. Perfect. All right. So we have a lengthy presentation. There's a lot to talk about. It's a really big and deep project. So just an overview of what we're going to go over is a little bit about us, our board of directors and our staff, where we're at now, what we offer to our members, where we need to go from here, what the Visit Galt initiative is, the need for it, why people visit Galt, how to get more people to visit Galt, the visitor center component, increasing the revenues within the chamber, a value proposition for the city of Galt, why now is a good time for this initiative, how ARPA funds play into it, and then also us being a nonprofit. And lastly, the investment that we're asking for.
Okay, so a little bit about us. Of course, you all know us. We've been around, we're all around town. We are your neighbors, we're your friends and family that own various different types of businesses. And right now, we currently have 188 active members, and we're looking forward to growing that as the city grows and as business grows.
All right. So on our executive board, we have me. My name's Madison. I am the owner of Parker Realty here in town. Our vice president, Rochelle Kopp, owns the State Farm here in town. Kirk Smith is the owner of Velvet Creamery, and he's our second vice president. Tony Gerling, who's here today, is our secretary, and she is the owner of Express Tape and Graphics. And then Bonnie Rodriguez, presenting here with me, is the owner of the Galt Herald, and she's our treasurer. We have a general board with 10 other people. They are business owners, rental property owners, and then managers and directors at other companies here in Galt. We're a diverse group, and I think that we really encompass a lot of different aspects of businesses here in town. We currently have one employee. Her name is Roxy Steinwand, and she is our operations manager. She just started with us at the beginning of this year, and she is nothing short of amazing. She takes care of all of our operations, our marketing, our bookkeeping, and our grant writing and reporting. It's a lot of work, but she's efficient and she's extremely capable. She has a background in bookkeeping. She worked for CPA before coming to us. So she is helping us grow in ways that we haven't before, but as you can see, she takes care of a lot for us.
So where is the chamber now? Well, as you know, you've all have attended events that we've had. So under our existing climate right now, we host business mixers, we host, we celebrate businesses with a Business of the Month, we celebrate businesses as they have anniversaries, we, we hold luncheons, luncheon learns, where we have implemented more of a, of a learning curve to that, to, for our attendees so that they can learn new marketing or other skills. So we're implementing to try to boost our existing membership. I do have to say, at our last luncheon, we actually had three new members who came specifically because of the luncheon learn. So, so these luncheon learns, we're learning how to attract and how to help people to grow themselves as well. And we've been doing that under our existing climate. And we can do so much more and boost that and have actual classes where we could have, you know, a whole QuickBooks course, or we could have a full marketing course outside of me, you know, things like that. You know, we can actually build and move forward with, with what we have right now.
So we are currently located, thanks to Bonnie, inside of the Galt Herald. You can see my little, like, I don't know what that's called, pin of where our office is. So you walk inside the Galt Chamber, or the Galt Herald, I'm sorry, turn left, and then we have a private office there. You'll hear about it later in the presentation, but we're really looking to expand that so we can expand our services as well. We are currently a visitor center for the city of Galt. We have tons of pamphlets on things that can be done, a business directory, maps, and things of that nature. All right. So our current member benefits, one of the biggest things that we do for our members is provide governmental outreach and advocacy. We come and speak to people like you. We've met with the Office of Congresswoman Matsui and a number of other governmental officials, and we do our best to keep in touch with them to best serve our members or link our members to them when they need them. We provide a number of educational opportunities for our members, namely our luncheon learns. In the future, we'd love to host, like, full-on classes or workshops for our members as well. We host a number of networking events. We do, right now, we're doing monthly networking mixers. We might change that to quarterly mega mixers, but those are a great way for our members to get together, talk shop, bounce ideas off of each other, and create referral partners within the community. As you guys know, Galt is a small but very loyal town, so that's something that we really capitalize on within the chamber. We provide advertising opportunities for our members, and we do that a number of ways. We do a print directory that's mailed to every single household here in Galt and their surrounding areas. We advertise for them online, on social media. We do direct mail, outdoor advertising for events, online, and then, of course, if they sponsor our events, we advertise for them as well. We hold grand openings and ribbon cuttings for new and existing members who hit special milestones. When we host these grand openings and ribbon cuttings, they're featured in the newspaper, they're posted online, and we gather other business and community members to attend these events and support the business owners here in town. We award and recognize our members. So like Bonnie said, we have an honorary Business of the Month every single month that we recognize for their stewardship, community involvement, and/or exemplary practices here in town. Our members feel really honored when we give them this recognition, and it's something we're really proud of. We also recognize our businesses at our end-of-the-year awards banquet, which we plan on expanding on so we can recognizing, give praise to more of our businesses. Lastly, we do help our members with grant writing and finding grants to support their business. This was really important during the COVID-19 pandemic. I can't tell you how many people were in the chamber office trying to figure out how to apply for the ARPA funding, the PPP loan, various other resources that were available. And the chamber was there for them every step of the way, giving them information on how to do that and helping them do it even with, right there with them. So where do we go from here? We, we're doing, in my opinion, a pretty good job at, you know, what we're doing, but I think there's a lot of room for us to grow. So we put together this Visit Galt initiative, which we see as the natural next step for the chamber to serve the business community and the community of Galt. So what is the Visit Galt initiative? It's an initiative to encourage visiting to Galt and the promotion of our local businesses. So a few of our goals and objectives with this initiative are to promote our great American little town through destination marketing and digital avenues to reach a regional audience, emphasize Galt's key attractions and activities as developed to boost and promote overnight visitation, foster relationships with area partners and their activities to create destination awareness, develop regional marketing and strategic traditional and, traditional and digital advertising, and then manage and maintain relationships with existing and potential groups hosting events in Galt so we can provide group accommodations and group packaging for their stays, and then increase engagement to expand further visitation to Galt. And also, I don't have a slide for this, so I'm just going to quickly touch on it. Visiting to Galt doesn't necessarily mean someone's coming here for the weekend and, you know, prancing all around through Galt. People come to Galt for a number of reasons, and I think we are grateful to have anyone, whether they're here for lunch, on their way traveling from Sacramento to Stockton, or if they're here overnight for a softball tournament or a wedding, or just to experience some of the amenities that Galt has.
So here's the need, and I think we all know this. So many, many of our businesses are still recovering from the pandemic, and some of them are just starting out. So we have some, some brand-new businesses that need help as well. So the, the economy and tourism especially, we all know, took a hit. And what better way to support both the tourism industry and the rest of the existing businesses than by bringing people in? So with the growth and development of our city and our business community, Galt has an opportunity to position itself as a unique and quaint spot for the commuters, travelers, and regional neighbors to stop for lunch, a day trip, or overnight stay. And I had an exciting meeting, just, just so that you know, we are reaching out to anybody and everybody at this point, because, you know, you just got to keep throwing that dart and whatever sticks. That's what we're doing. Thankfully, Welcome California is ecstatic about this proposal. And Welcome California, if you're not aware of that initiative, is a, is a huge tourism that's run by the state, well, not that's run by the state, but it's funded by the state. And I had the opportunity to speak to their representative in our area, and she has put forth that we could be, also, also house, along with our visitor center, a Welcome to California Center, I'm sorry, the Visit Galt, a Welcome to California Center that goes inside ours. The benefits of that, and this is all about making connections, right? The benefits of that is that's about the equivalent of about $250,000 of marketing that the state's going to do for Galt. So we get to put on, they'll start putting together packages of travel, here are these small towns, these cute little towns that you need to go and see, and here's, here's your road trip map, and we'll be one of those destinations. And then, you know, and part of that destination visit is, you know, a lunch somewhere and go see the cows, things like that. So we're constantly making these connections. The problem is, if we don't have someone for, somewhere for Welcome to California or Welcome California, I think they're welcome. It's a welcome center. Anyway, so, so this is part of the need. We need a location. The Galt Herald is great and everything, but y'all have been in that building, right? We need somewhere a little bit more conducive to, and inviting to visitors. So, and this is by bringing in people, and we don't need to, to tell you, but maybe as an education for those who are watching and those who are here, we have our two measures, Measure R and Measure Q. Measure Q is a really important one. We just passed it, and it's going to, right now, under the current climate, it's supposed to, it's projecting to bring in about $2 million, right? $2 to $3 million. Just, and that's all just on the existing, what we have existing, and on the residents who are here. But if we can bring in a lot more foot traffic of, of neighboring communities or people on a road trip, that will help bear that burden and boost both Measure R and Measure Q, that's a win-win for all of us. We're not, we know the complaints. People don't want a lot of people move in. They came and wanted to shut the door behind them. Fine, I get it, I feel it. We want to keep that small-town feel. So this is an opportunity to not have to build a rooftop. This is an opportunity to bring money in and then see them, "Thank you for visiting, come again." And they're not, you know, in the rooftop. So this is a great opportunity for, for Galt to boost their existing Measure R, Measure Q, and of course, TOT. We want, we, we'll talk a little bit in future in this presentation about how we can get some beds and heads and, or heads and beds. Do that every time. Heads and beds to our hotels, since we just doubled our beds, our capacity here in Galt. How do we get them to come and stay? Even if it's just Even if it's just overnight, that's TOT money. That's very beneficial and a boost. So, and again, is if everybody's working on the, on the situation, the rising tide lifts all boats. So that helps all of our businesses. It helps the city.
All right, so why Visit Galt? I chuckled a little because when we reached out to community members to get their input on our ideas, a few people said, "Why would someone visit Galt?" And it shocked me because I'm from here, I'm a Realtor, I sell this town, I love this town, and I could think of a number of reasons why people would swing by Galt. Maybe they're not going to stay for a week, but there's a lot of reasons that people can stay for the day or overnight. A few of those reasons might be to walk the Consumnis River Preserve, tour the Hurt on the Street Community Art Project. There are people that are big art people that would come and spend the day checking them out, getting dinner, maybe stay the night and head home the next day. Learn about the history of the Ray House or McFarland Ranch. It'd be awesome if we started boosting tourism so those places were open more on weekends for the community and for visitors. They can shop at the Galt Market or the Saturday Market. The Saturday Market is a huge favorite here in town, and I know I have tons of friends that when they visit other small towns, love to attend their farmers' markets. So I think that's a big draw that we have as well. Many people attend weddings in the area. We have McFarland Ranch, Champagne Ranch, Hanford Ranch, Grace Vineyards, and that's only in Galt and really close to it. There's a ton, as you guys know, in Lodi and Elk Grove where people are traveling for weddings as well. And we offer many times a more affordable housing, or overnight solution, lodging solution for them, so we can pull people from those areas to Galt as well. Attend youth sports tournaments. We're talking about softball a lot. They host tournaments frequently, and baseball. So when people come for those sporting events, it's our hope that they stay in Galt and visit our Galt restaurants and our Galt amenities. Attending a correctional academy graduation. I believe they have graduations every, like, six to eight weeks or pretty frequently, and those are people from all over the state. Be awesome to have them overnight. Visiting friends or family. People come into town, they stay at our hotels, or when I have family even visit from the East Coast, you know, sometimes they're like, "Should we stay in Galt? Should we stay in Lodi?" I'm always an advocate for them to stay in Galt, and I think we need to continue that push. Visiting, or visitors from neighboring towns. You know, people in Sacramento and Rockland and Roseville sometimes want to get out of the big city and visit rural towns. I think that we have something to offer them as well. They can stop on a road trip up or down the state, getting out of the city, like I said, or grabbing a drink at one of our tap houses or tasting rooms or enjoying a meal at a restaurant. There's a lot of reasons to visit Galt.
Okay, so how do we get them here? Well, if they don't know about us, I don't know how many people were around, but years ago, Barbara Payne was sitting up where you guys are, and she wore the badge that she got Galt put on a map, because quite literally 20 years ago, we weren't on a printed map. We were, we were a dot, but Galt wasn't there. And so Barbara did the Barbara Payne magic and got us, got Galt on the map. Well, so we're on the map, but why do you go to Galt? So as we, as Madison just went over, she gave, there's a lot of reasons to come and many more, and there are many more reasons and future reasons, and we can kind of, we'll explain that a little bit as, as we go along. So, but how do we get them here? We're on a map, that's good. But now we need to, we need to be that blip on that map to bring them in. And the only way to do that is to let people know that we're here. And so that destination, uh, marketing is the only way to do that. We've got to, we can advertise, you can advertise in the Galt Herald as much as you want, and I love it, I'll take your money. But that's just for people in here. So we need to push out, and, and the city already knows this, they do that for the Galt Market, right? They advertise on the bus that goes up to Sacramento. The, the city advertises on other radio stations, and I think you're on the digital billboard up at Kaiser. So we know we have to advertise outside of the city to bring people in. So that would be a role we would take on for the Chamber and our businesses, and of course, another opportunity for the Galt Market and the other things that the city's advertising for themselves, that's part of it. So more opportunity and reach for the city itself as well. So we, we reach out and we maybe put together packages. So we go to the new La Quinta and we tell, and we put La Quinta in the room, and we put the preserve in the room, and we get, and we grab Janice Barsetti, and we say, "Twilight or the preserve after dark." You do that, or Twilight, preserve at the Twilight. And you come down and you get to stay a night at, at the La Quinta after going and spending a nice evening with the bugs out in, you know, I don't, I wouldn't do it, but, you know, but you know, there's something for everyone. And so you put together these packages, you put the same people in the room, and they come up with a package, and then that's what we market, "Come to Galt." And one of the things that the, the representative from Welcome to California talked about, I asked her, I said, "What's trending right now? What are people, what are they traveling to?" She said, "They want out of the cities. They're looking for the small towns." Hello, we're here, we just need to put that out there. Come to the small town. And just, just so that you're aware, we, we took a field trip. Councilman Sandu went with us, and we went up to the Sacramento Airport. You know what's flashing all over the Sacramento Airport? Visit Lodi. Only 30 minutes from Sacramento. Okay, but stop in Galt. So, and, so part of that marketing is, is also teaming up with Lodi. They're already spending the money. We've already made those connections and talked to them. Hey, let's split this. They can do a, a little road trip. Maybe we create our own road trips, Galt and Lodi. It, it's all about that marketing, and we've, we plan, I mean, our plan is to get out in front of it. We're going to pull the people in, we're going to make them stop at Galt when they're driving south or as they're driving north. Stop in Galt, eat at Brewster's, come see some of the history. And as, as we build and as we get more people here, then the Historical Society may have a little bit more funding for them, and they can open their, their two beautiful museums more than once a month. And now we have more people coming down. But we got to market it. We have to spend that money to bring them in.
So like Bonnie said, we took a trip to the airport, and our original intent when visiting the airport was to put a cow there. Everyone loves the Hurt on the Street Project, we also love it. So we went to the airport to visit and look at ideas and places to put a cow. So while we were there, a couple of ideas came up. If you see the gallery at SMF there, Tim Cullum, who is a local artist, he's actually a Realtor as well, in Sacramento, has an art gallery, and there's lots of pictures of cows and sunflowers and things in there. And we were connected with him about him potentially decorating a cow and us putting it in his gallery there at the airport, which would be an awesome opportunity for us. Another idea that we had is putting a cow on the carousel there, on the baggage carousel up top by that screen. The airport right now is looking into the feasibility for that and if it's realistic and okay, but we are in contact with them. And those cows would have a QR code saying, "Visit Galt," and then people scan it and can see everything that there is to do in Galt, as well as check out all the cows, of course. Another really awesome advertising opportunity at the International Airport is that screen. So it's right there. And there was supposed to be a video, but my PowerPoint presentation skills are subpar, so I couldn't get it to play in the presentation. But that is a TV screen that is constantly playing 10-second ads. And if you were to watch it, in the 30 seconds that this video is on, there was an ad about the Jelly Belly Factory, which I believe is in Trace, Fairfield, Tracy, I don't know, one of those cities. There was a Visit Marin ad, and then there was another Visit City ad on there, and they're each between six to 10 seconds long. The amazing and super cool feature about advertising on there is that you can change your ad within 24 hours. We just would upload it to an online portal, they check it out, they approve it, and then it changes. The advertising on those screens is extremely affordable. And one of our ideas, in addition to advertising, you know, the old Galt Festival that we're going to, you know, implement this year, or our Wine Bear Food Event, is, like Bonnie said, connecting a few of our businesses and creating little mock itineraries for people to visit Galt. So maybe it says, "Stop by on your way to," I don't know, Modesto. And there's a video of a family, and maybe they check in at the Best Western Hotel, and then they go walk around and see the cows, and then they go eat at Brewster's, and they get dessert at Velvet Creamery. So each of those businesses can pay for a portion of that ad, help us recover the costs, and we are facilitating a really awesome advertising opportunity for them. The cool thing about marketing at the airport is we're not just marketing to tourists, right? A lot of our regional neighbors travel in and out of Sacramento International Airport. So not only are we getting people, you know, coming here from other areas, but we're also trying to get those people in Elk Grove, Folsom, and other areas to stop by for lunch or dinner, or, you know, visit us in some capacity. So other ways that we get people to visit Galt, digital marketing. As you guys know, we are very easily influenced on social media and on our phones. There's people that do this for a living and make millions of dollars being influencers. That's not us. But we can definitely put our face in front of people on social media and create a page where people can check out what there is to do in Galt, check out reviews, and plan their stay. Additionally, of course, we can do Google AdWords, and, you know, you can see at the bottom of the little thing on the left, do an ad about visiting Galt where, when people search "Galt Area Hotels" or "Galt Area Experiences," our link comes up first. The advertising's more affordable than you think, so that's something that we hope to do as well.
So I kind of touched on this a little bit, but I'll ta, take it a little bit further. So bachelorette parties, let's talk about those. Where do they go? A lot of them go to Vegas, right? They're going to do the, but not everybody can afford something big like that. So again, talking to the hotels, talking to the amenities in the area, and putting them together, and let's put together a bridal package, you know, or a wedding package or a bachelorette package, or working with the, the city with the softball tournaments and stuff, and, and working with them to solicit to the softball players and those teams to actually stay in Galt. I think a lot of them do when they're traveling, but maybe they're not all doing that, so we need to make that, make those priorities to bring the people who are coming to Galt for something, "Why aren't you staying in Galt?" So, but we've got to let them know, and we've got to put those packages to, together and help people, and advertise that. We've got to get that, get that out. So we, our staff and our, our idea is to, that we would help facilitate the majority of that. And let's be honest, we all, and I'm not going to make her really uncomfortable, but we, everyone knows that Amy works super hard, and, and we totally respect everything she does, and she has a lot of great ideas. And I think I said this once before, she's a team of one. So asking her to be responsible for marketing Galt like this, at this level, she probably would need at least another staff member, I would say, or two. This is something that we can take on and, and make successful. We have, again, 188 businesses, and, and, and I want you to kind of think about that number, 188 businesses in Little Galt that survived the pandemic. These business owners, they have, they have the drive, they know what they're doing because they're still here, and we, we need to capitalize on that, that knowledge and that passion, and we can help them to do that.
Of course, in addition to marketing those ways, we would offer visitor services. Like Bonnie said, it's a matter of time and resources, and we know that the city doesn't have an abundance of that, and at the moment, we don't either. But with the additional staff that we are hoping to get, we will definitely be well-equipped to handle visitor services. We will also be a location we're scouting, which will be on a future slide, would be a perfect location to have pamphlets and coupons and flyers, merchandise, and a number of other things for visitors when they're here in town. So that brings us to the visitor center. The visitor center will tell Galt's story, promote and encourage visitor expenditures and assembly, and disseminate information designed to further develop Galt as a destination. The Chamber is already in talks with a location in downtown Galt. It's a fantastic location. We are in the process of applying for it and securing it, and it has, it's on Fourth Street, has a beautiful storefront, and it would allow us to do all these things and also put us in a position where we are, where everything's happening in Galt in downtown. If possible, we would like to add a meeting space to the visitor's center. So there are two storefronts right next to each other available. We know that we can handle the first one, the, the visitor's center, but we would really like to add a meeting space, and what that meeting space would consist of is a board-style conference room with a big table, 15 chairs around it, a projector, and then also potentially a classroom. I see the community using this and our local businesses using this a lot. Internally, of course, we'd use it for board, ambassador, and committee meetings, but the community could also use it for parent meetings and volunteer meetings. The classroom could be used for businesses hosting, you know, Solar 101, or, I don't know, First Time Homebuyer Seminars, a number of things. We could also use that space to host our own events in for like a luncheon learn or a workshop, which would be incredible. This space would be rented out to the community, like an hourly reservation basis, and we think that it'd really be well-used, since there's nothing really like it here in town. Of course, we need some staffing. So in order to execute this whole initiative, one of the most important components is hiring a experienced and competent executive director. Hopefully someone that's, you know, maybe working at another Chamber as their assistant to their executive director and looking to promote and has a lot of experience. Their main job would be within the Chamber recruiting, retention, and involvement within our members. But in addition to that, they would be the primary person, finding, researching, negotiating, and securing these marketing and advertising opportunities that we're sharing with you for the destination marketing component of our plan. This person is so needed and could also serve the city in promoting the city to infill some of those vacant spaces we need and some necessary businesses that we have. Increasing revenues. So of course, the Chamber's going to do their part to also grow their revenues to front the, part of the cost for this growth that we want to take on. A number of ways that we'll do that is recruiting new membership. If we have an executive director, they will have the time necessary to do that. Our membership isn't just limited to businesses, it's also individuals and organizations. It'd be awesome to get organizations in Galt involved in our membership because I think we have something to offer them. Of course, we will pitch higher-tiered membership to our existing members, and if we start offering destination marketing, that's a really big added benefit to offer to our members. We're going to increase sponsorship opportunities, of course, so people can sponsor luncheon learns or networking mixers and a number of other things, which helps us keep the lights on and fund projects like this. We will also increase sponsorship sales for events like the Wine Bear Food Event and the Old Galt Festival that we're putting on. If we're doing destination marketing for those events, it's easier for our business members to sponsor that event because they know that more people are going to attend it because it's better advertised. We really want to have a Galt merchandise store. Like I said earlier, Galt is loyal, and they have a lot of pride in our little town, so it'd be awesome to sell, you know, Galt hats, Galt sweatshirts, Galt t-shirts, and we could cater those items to whatever community events are happening. So for the IDC Festival, we could get some red, white, and blue, or some, you know, American Pride style clothing items to sell and offer to our community. And then, of course, if we have the conference room and classroom rental, we could incorporate some of that time into our member benefits, but we can also, you know, sell those hours to people in the community at a low cost. And then, of course, our executive director will help us in developing and implementing new events to further support our members and increase revenue.
Okay, I know we're going long, so I'm going to be really quick. So our value proposition for the city is, and, and we've touched on it a little bit, is that this executive officer would be a, a helpmeet for the city, whether it's, it's Amy and she's going off to one of the conferences to kind of sell Galt, then off our executive officer goes if she thinks that that would be beneficial to have, you know, a, a second face. goes if she thinks that that would be beneficial to have, you know, a second face coming from the, from the business standpoint. Or maybe we work hand-in-hand with, with Jackie. I mean, we both, both organizations are, have had successful events, but what, what happens when we come together? What does that event look like if we can pull all those resources? We're not here to step on toes with the city and we, but we, but sometimes when, what happens is you're both recreating the will instead of working together and getting that big will. And so we would be here as this, as the city would like and like I said, you know, that destination marketing, let's help, let's market the, the flea market, let's market the Saturday markets, you know, we can all build into that and help. Don't want to step on toes, we won't impose ourselves, but if we're asked, we're there.
So why now? The Chamber has worked really hard the last several years to improve its backend infrastructure. We've improved our systems, our software, and restructured our board of directors to really be efficient in the way that we deal. There's a couple of awesome, really, community events that we can leverage and start advertising with these events as we get buy-in from local businesses to work hand-in-hand with us on this. And then, of course, the funding. We would never want to take away from the city or your general fund or, you know, money that's very well-spent elsewhere, but right now, we have the unique opportunity of these leftover ARPA funds that were already earmarked for the business community. As you guys know, there was 1.3 million, we were able to get rid of 800,000, but there's about $500,000 left and that's, would do a lot in helping us start and deploying this initiative.
So again, just going back around, we are a 501(c)(6). We do have board members, we have an executive board that's very active. We make the majority of the decisions and, and then take it to our board so that they know what's going on. None of us receive monies for doing this, this is all volunteer. We've been able, been able to pull off a lot of great accomplishments with an all-volunteer board and we do have our paid staff, but, and like many of you in the room and many of the city employees, our employee is not paid enough either, but very, very loyal and we work hard, but none of us are benefiting from this money. I will not personally see any $500,000, none of our board members will. This will be for Galt. This will be a very visible thing for Galt to see. Come to the visitor center, input. We want community engagement, we want the community to be involved in what this looks like, what is Galt? So again, we're, we're a 501(c)(6), we are governed by law, none of us see any money from this, we just want to do good for the businesses and the, the community of Galt.
Just to add to that, we are all volunteers, there are no per diems, there are no stipends. We don't get meals paid for, we pay for our own luncheon learns, so just to reiterate that. So now the good stuff, the investment that we are asking you guys to approve for us. So we're asking for the $500,000 leftover of ARPA funds that are already earmarked to businesses. 150 of those thousand, of those $500,000 will go towards establishing the visitor's center and the meeting space, which I think we can all agree is super-needed. Another 100,000 is going to the initial advertising and marketing costs. We have to get the ball rolling and kind of show businesses what we're doing and the good that it's bringing and then I think we'll be able to get their buy-in to help, you know, moving forward. And then 200,000 is going towards an executive director salary for the next three to four years until the Chamber is self-sufficient and can fund that executive director on its own. I think that's a very feasible thing to do. We just need help getting started and kind of increasing our revenues for the first couple of years. Additionally, the Chamber is asking that we get 30% of the annual TOT funds collected with a minimum contribution of $100,000 per year. I think that with what we're doing in promoting tourism, I think this is a perfect fit. There are several other cities that get a chunk of that TOT funding and I think that Galt would be perfect for that, too. That money would go towards the visitor's center, rent and utilities, an additional visitor specialist, which is someone to help work the visitor's center on nights and, or weekends and holidays. That would not be someone conducting chamber work, it would be visitor's center activity. And then, of course, marketing funds that we will continue to do. That's all we've got for you, sorry, that was kind of long. Do you guys have any questions, clarifications, objections, modifications, concerns, anything?
Thank you, Madison and Bonnie, that was a lot of information. Does the council have any questions?
Yeah. So I was just going over the cost of the, I appreciate the breakdown, I didn't expect to see that on where you think the initial seed money, I guess if you were to call it, would go. I know that it is funny how people think, well, what do you come to Galt for? I mean, we have this fabulous flea market that's been around for like 60 years, so, I mean, that was the first thing that popped to my head, but somebody recently said to me, it's like, what do we come to Galt for? I, I just was kind of blown away by the comment because I think there's a lot of things that people come to Galt for. Why the heck do people come to Galt to move here? I mean, why do people come here and go, I love it, I want to move here? I don't know, maybe it's that intangible thing, but I think something, you know, whether or not the council, you know, agrees with this idea will remain to be seen. I do think that it is time that we brand ourselves or something needs to be done, we can't just sit back and just do nothing moving forward. I do appreciate the fact that, you know, because there's many things with this community that are important for our money, right? As you've heard from people coming from more sports facilities and all those kinds of stuff. But I do appreciate the fact that I know this council did earmark 1.3 for businesses. I was a little disappointed that they didn't all get it, that we had leftovers, for whatever reason. But I do think that I would personally, just as one council member, like to see this money still affect and promote, support the businesses by proxy in some manner. I don't want to really see that money go to something else outside of the business, I think we have other money for that. So anyways, that's the comments I have, and I don't want to have any specific questions, I'll, I'll look this over and mill this over. Thank you for the presentation, ladies.
Thank you for the proposal. And I'll be as candid in public as I was when we met in private. This is more in line with the beginnings of a proposal that I, when I suggested you meet with the city manager. I thought something at least this detailed was, you know, would be appropriate at that time, so I appreciate this. I appreciate how it's grown from the first one. You've obviously done your work, listened to some questions, and have detailed out some of the, as Councilmember Farmer asked, why, why do people come here? What are we talking about? This cited conferences. Be realistic, we don't have conference facilities here that are going to, you know, bring your company here. But when you start putting it together with commuters, travelers, day trip, and maybe the overnight stay, you're, now you're getting down to some specifics that we can work with. So I appreciate that. One question, you talked a lot about the airport. What other area partners are you talking about working with in this proposal?
We've looked into a number of different things, billboard advertising, partnering with other neighboring communities. What else?
We've had several conversations with Visit Lodi and would love to share advertising space, of course, that helps our bottom line as well, so that might be an initial jump in there. I really quick want to kind of answer, because I didn't say it before, about the why-visit Galt. One of the things is, you know, if you build it, they will come, right? So that works for businesses as well as it does for visitors. So if people, if businesses can see a lot of visitor traffic, we're going to spark new businesses in Galt. And whether those are cottage-type things, maybe someone does a little cheese, we actually, to be honest, I didn't want to spoil anything because we don't know what exactly is happening, but we are actually talking to a local dairyman who has had a dream for years that he wants to have a little cheese factory, little, you know, a little cottage cheese factory. That sounds funny. But, but, you know, he has, so he has a little space downtown and now you've developed something else that they can come and, and see, that, right? There's a little bit more of the field and then maybe someone wants to do, I don't know, butter seems to be a big thing right now, I don't, maybe they're going to go churn butter, whatever it is that that's bringing people down. So when we do one, it will help the other, which will then help, you know what I mean? So that's why-visit Galt, let's start the foot traffic so we can get even more reasons to visit Galt.
And to add on to your question, so we've talked to Visit California, Welcome California, Visit Lodi, of course, is a great resource that we've been working with. We've talked to the airport, we've talked to billboard advertising companies, and we've talked to social media specialists, too, about all of those different ways that we could grow the Chamber and advertise online and what that investment looks like and what the estimated ROI on that is. We can go into that more in detail, too, but we'd be here another probably 20 minutes.
Yeah, and I don't want to drag anything out. I would say I push back on the characterization that we're sitting around doing nothing because I think, as you said, Amy's been putting a lot of work into marketing Galt and attracting business. But I do appreciate the, as I said, the specificity, the ways you're intending to improve the Chamber and the Chamber's work with the city. And I like the idea of talking about the TOT, the ongoing money. But what I really want to see is, and I want to have a chance to look this over and, and talk some more about, if this is a good idea and I think we should support it, great. Where the money comes from, we'll figure that out. You know, again, being candid, I thought the first ask was, give us the ARPA money and then we'll do something with it. So I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to picking it apart some more.
Thank you, and I hope that clarified, too, when we came at the ARPA funding, the visitor's center and the whole idea of that has been around for a long time. Amy Mendez has been talking about the need for it for a while and we've always thought it was a little bit out of reach, but when we realized that there was a little bit of those ARPA funds, that idea kind of resurfaced and we kind of felt a little bit of excitement and, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but we felt like with that seed money, we could make this happen, so it wasn't out of thin air, but we're very excited about it.
I do want to jump in and say, I wasn't knocking Amy at all, I know she's working hard and, and the city is doing things, you're obviously out about there, so I just want to clarify.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Sandu or Councilman Lozano, do you have any comments or questions? I was going to ask, but go ahead. Okay. Vice Mayor Sandu, would you like to have any questions?
First of all, thank you, Madison, thank you, and thank you for all the Chamber members that are here and the proposal they bring is a good proposal, I review it, I look it up. This proposal, I know $500,000 is a lot of money, but if they go by their plan, this money come back to the city, this money come back to the citizen, and this money come back to the business. If any business will grow, then they generate some TOT sales tax. Any visitor come here to stay, they need two places to live. 10% is going to the city. If anybody come here, go to the restaurant, if anybody here to put a gas in there, that's sales tax. So I know, lot of money, 500,000, and I believe it's in ARPA money, it's, we can use it with the consent of all my other colleagues. And the other thing, their plan, who is making that office and going to grow so more visitor can come. As a councilor, at my personal experience, I talked to a lot of people, when they come to, when they talk to, where is a good place to eat? Where is a good place to put a gas on it? So if that plan go through, it can come back, we can have some kind of money. And especially TOT and sales tax, it's go to general funds. I can see it, my salary, even I get $300,000, it came from general fund. So we need, we need to support that and I, I will support. I don't know, it's $500,000, how much we have, all discussed, but this is a good plan. And then also, you're talking about the TOT, whatever can city, certainly, I can, we will discuss it. So this is a good plan and I will let the other member to ask the question, then I have any question, I will ask, I have a few questions, but I'm going to ask at the end.
Thank you, sir.
I just have a couple of clarifying questions and then I'll wait for the public comment. Is, a question that kind of popped up and I, I guess I could have looked it up, but is there a regional or a California Chamber organization that can support this as well?
So there's a Western Association of Something Chambers.
Yeah, there are chambers and, you know, they all have their levels, but they don't do visitor centers. That's not what their purpose is. I mean, some of, there are chambers that do visitor centers. This is not, just for also clarification, there is a, I don't want legal and maybe Mr. Spinaario can jump here, but there is a legal visitor bureau where usually it has a hotelier on it and it has a restaurant representative, so they have an actual board. That's not what this is, we're doing a visitor's center, doing all the work, really, of what a bureau would do without jumping through those things, because that's a whole nother board and in a small town, we have a hard, you have a hard enough time filling your commissions, you have a hard enough time filling, you know, board member positions on, you know, various things, adding a whole nother board in there. So the chambers, the, there's a Sacramento County one, there is a state one, there's, there's different levels of chambers and we actually sat on, yeah, we are members of, and all the way to national. So we are, we are part of that, just so everybody knows, National's not doing so well in back there, so we don't want to be affiliated with them right now, according to my daughter. But, so they will have some help, but not financial. They will be a support if we need something, but not, and it would be certainly something that because we're members, we can advertise through them as well. So if we're having an event or if our members are doing something big enough, we can work with that, with those chambers as well.
Okay, that's good to know. I wasn't necessarily asking about financial, but, but, you know, in many organizations, you have a, a, a regional or statewide organization that provides, you know, that support that's needed, especially for new programs. The other thing is, is when you talked about Welcome California program, is that a state department or is that a fund that's brought by the state to a nonprofit? How does that work?
You know, I didn't go into details on how her program works, I know that they're funded by the state, so it is Visit California, I apologize publicly.
And if you get the opportunity, go to visitcalifornia.com, there's a number of super-small cities on there and you can see how they show off their experiences, though they might be smaller than experiences in Sacramento, they really do a good job of depicting those in a big way.
So recently, or well, within the last couple of years, after the pandemic, I believe it was in Plymouth or somewhere up in the foothills, they, one of those small little towns opened a visitor's center and Visit California did a welcome center there. And so Welcome California threw a big shindig there and invited everyone, we were invited, everybody in the area and outside of that area are invited to come to one of these celebrations. This organization and, and these visit, visits, visitor centers, I guess, all around, they know about this. Just that event alone, you, we will have people in hotel rooms, we will have people in town. So this is a really great relationship and, and help, because I asked her, she's, I said, or she said, call me anytime, if you need help setting this up, what it looks like, what's working, she's super-excited about it. And she's, luckily, we're close to Sacramento, that's where she's based out of, so she's local and definitely will be a help for us.
And if you guys know what TripAdvisor is, Visit California is like that for California. It's a great website, like I said, I encourage you to go check it out. We would definitely have a partnership with them and seek a lot of guidance from them.
Now help, help me make the connection in my notes, because I just jotted down Visit California and Welcome California program. How are those connected or are they?
Welcome, Welcome California is the name of their, their visitor's centers that they put inside our visitor's center. So they'll have a kiosk, they have a kiosk. So they'll have a kiosk, they have a kiosk they can bring, and then it's interactive, and they have a whole program. But part of it, like I said, one of the great benefits of it is that they're doing all the, a lot of the advertising for us, just for us to host that kiosk.
Well, I, my ear certainly perked up when you said 250,000 a year in advertising by the state, that's, that's impressive. And then lastly, just a question about the junior chamber program. Can you tell us what that is?
Tried to do this, we just didn't have the staffing for it. So instead of doing the JCs, is that what it was called, instead of its own organization, which we could go for too, see, we need that executive director to give us some guidance and time, because we're all working full time. But it can either be a new JC, so they are a junior chamber, they have their own teenage board that, working with entrepreneurism, you know, those kids. It also, what we tried to do right before the pandemic, I'll blame the pandemic, is we were working with the high school district, and we were going to host up to five and mentor up to five of those kids, especially those who had an idea for a business or that wanted to go into business. So they were, we had a whole program where we were going to pull them in, you know, talk to them, see what their interests were, help them develop resumes, help them to do job interviews and, and, you know, boost. So there's a lot of different directions that could go. We just, that's one of our dreams.
And I would suspect that at some point, the, the high school district board and would probably be approached by that, and likely the elementary district board, right? I mean, there's, there's an opportunity there to really partner.
And there was another, I don't know if you guys were aware, but there was another organization or group of people that put together kind of like a Shark Take style pitch fest with young entrepreneurs here in town, and all of these entrepreneurships pitched their businesses, and they gave, I think, $1,500 of seed money to a local Galt resident who was actually a makeup artist. So it purchased all of her, like, starting kit to fund the start of her business. That would be a great, you know, idea for the chamber, and I think it would be great to give back to the community in that way. Again, another idea, but if we had an executive director, we might be able to put it to action.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
We have one card, but I have a hand raise online. I don't know if it's on this topic, I'll find out. Oh, they just took their hand down.
Thank you. I want to speak in favor of this, but I'm going to take one part of it. It's a very large program, a very good program, but it has to start somewhere. The somewhere is the visitor's center. And a visitor's center that we're talking about here, we're talking about it beyond the visitor's center that they usually do. The key words there are welcome and help. And we can take a negative and turn it into a great positive. For instance, when we've had the bad weather and there's been detours, they got to get off 99, they don't know where they're at. They see visitor's center, oh, they can help. They come in, how are you? How can we help you? Well, first of all, we're hungry, okay? We have a special diet, where should we go? All right, you tell them the restaurant, you show them where it's at, you put it on a map for them, that's what you do. They're going to remember that. Then you go and they go, oh, you know what? We're tired from driving, okay? Well, we have two locations here to help you. One might be a little full, they're both very good, prices are right. Oh, good. By the way, and I'm going to turn around a moment, I noticed you have some sport equipment in your vehicle. We have a great gymnasium here, you can keep up your exercise. Now, what do you think about that? That's how we're going to start. That's how we're going to bring in people, and we will bring in revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some questions, but, so the $500, $500,000 ask is to cover how many years?
A startup cost, and then three to four years of salary. You cannot, you know, market some of that salary. A salary for an executive director is probably a healthy $75,000 a year. Of course, we will negotiate and try and get the best rate possible, but for someone that's experienced, that's something that we can expect.
Then beyond that, you're hoping that the TOT tax could help pick up the difference if needed?
Not for the executive director's salary, we're really hoping that our event revenue and our increase in membership and our increased in higher tiered membership will cover the cost of that executive director. We'd really love for that TOT money just to go back to tourism. And so that, of course, includes the visitor's center, that rent and utilities, the pamphlets, and all of the information that's put in there, and then advertising and marketing opportunities where the chamber would run some of the cost of that.
Okay. The local dairy, I mean, he doesn't happen to be Dutch, does he?
I don't know, I know him really well, I, probably.
I'm very fond of a specific type of Dutch cheese that, I have to travel 40, 50 miles to find somewhere else.
You'll have to open up a shop and make.
We'll help you in any way we can.
I've had my fill of milking cows, trust me. So, okay. I know the staff didn't, wasn't prepared for this question at all, but the thought occurred to me that, do we have any historical data collection that could aid us in understanding what their advertising could bring into the city because of the market? Does that make sense?
Because of the marketing, is that what you're?
Yes, or if we marketed specifically for the Wednesday, Thursday market, you know, do we have data to help support what they want? And you don't have to get, have the answer, I know you don't have that cold, I would be really impressed if you did, but, you know, if you could get it to us, maybe.
We don't have the, we have Placer AI visitors' data, which is the subscription that we had used actually ARPA funding for back in, I don't know if it was December, probably that we had requested ARPA funding for a subscription for visitation data, and so that is cell phone data, essentially. So we're able to track specific events for specific dates, locations, how many people are coming, we can do that specific to the market, to the Saturday market, to the Tuesday, Wednesday market. I actually was on a call this morning with Placer to gather information for the Galt market specifically for the year, because of some retailers that we're working with that are interested in the Simmerhorn project. And so that, we could measure that, I mean, for specific events or over a time period. We also have TOT data that we, you know, collect on an annual basis from the hotels, so determining whether or not there is an increase in TOT that could be tied to it.
Would it be a lot of trouble to get, I don't want to get, you know, put a ton on your plate, is it possible to get a sampling of that for, so we can get an idea?
We can pull a report, I mean, I just did it today, yeah, for the Galt market, so I mean, that's already prepared. It's really easy for us to, you know, pull the information from the database.
That would be fabulous. And then just one last thing, I'd like, go ahead, if you have a.
I was just going to say, we did already reach out to Amy too, regarding what tools you guys have to track those types of things. We researched a couple of business or companies that do that on our own as well, so that way we could kind of track the success that we have in our efforts. So we have information on that, of course, we don't want to spend that money or use those resources until we are suited, better suited to put them to good use.
Right, but that would give us a better idea of.
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly, baseline.
Definitely, because we would assume that you would, anybody would be asking for, you know, some sort of tangible or, you know, deliverable reporting, so we'd be able to show, hey, okay, this is where we started, and after two or three years, whatever that looks like, this is, these are the things we did, and here's how many attended these events, and this is, you know, we, we all need a baseline, a baseline of some sort.
Okay, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're more of a general sense, you're looking to generate the things necessary for Galt to be somewhat of a destination city. Not, not that we have an, you know, an Old Town Sacramento, but we could, like, the yearly event you're scheduling for Old Town Galt, that's, sounds very fun, something I think a lot of people would show interest in, and you're, in general, you want to create enough of that to benefit the city and, in best case scenario, eliminate the $3.5 million we bleed annually.
So I don't, Amy probably could speak more to this, you know, we're not going to bring in the coals, we're not, you know.
Well, that's, that's.
Those kind of things, but the events, yes, at least we, we have the one event we want to start doing, more events that would bring people in, but not just the community, you know, not just community members, we don't, we're trying to take the financial burden off of, or at least share it with those coming in, so that the, the community benefits from the money, the, or the little TOT money and sales tax that goes to measure R or measure Q, just boost, boost those.
Sure. Part of the reason I say that is, the city is doing things to help, you know, development in the city, which we need. We're also reaching a point where larger businesses will start showing interest in our community, if not in a year or two, five or six years, maybe, whatever it is, but, so to me, it's, it's a good idea to be proactive and have these things that can only help benefit the city in that aspect.
Absolutely, and I think it's important that in these next few years too, we mentioned it briefly in our presentation, but that we really work on branding Galt. This whole initiative, we hope, is a partnership with the city, and we really value your input and want to, like I said, work in collaboration with you. But I think branding Galt and determining, you know, I think we have a good idea of what Galt is, but I think it could use some branding, so that way we attract the businesses that the community wants. And we can do that a number of ways through advertising and doing events and catering things to this.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council?
Just one last comment, not for you guys, but just to say, I do want to say thank you to Amy for all the work that she does. I know that she's kind of the, the one man band and does, you know, not only PIO, but, you know, she does significantly about of trying to promote Galt in the, in her job. But I think that, you know, I think everybody would agree that money, seed money, investment money in, in doing something like this is, sometimes can work better in private hands, I think, than, than government hands. And, and so to ask Amy and maybe, you know, to enhance her staff to pull something like this off, I think is, you know, maybe realistic, but I just don't think long term. I think I'd rather look to, you know, 188 volunteers or 188 members that are entrepreneurs to brainstorm and do that work, seems like a bigger collaboration of people. So again, I would like to see, I would like to ask if, when, when the ARPA stuff comes back, I'd like to see, if we could see where the TOT money we collect gets spent. Right now, I'm curious, because I do like what Kevin mentioned about, I am too interested in doing some kind of ongoing TOT, but I want to see where the TOT money is spent right now. I know it's, it should be, hopefully, we spend some of it on tourism of some sort, but I would like to see that when it comes back, so that's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
We have one more public comment.
My name is Chris Broskin, long-term resident of Galt. I didn't come tonight intending to speak, but I look at a half a million dollars and I still think, half a million dollars is an awful lot of money. I'm amazed that we keep on spending like drunk sailors. And I realize ARPA money is free money from the federal government, but my kids and my grandkids are going to be paying that money back at some point, probably my great-grandkids at this rate. We keep on printing it like it's nothing. Which one of you wants to invest $500,000 into opening a visitor's center? I would look at something, if we're going to spend a half a million dollars, I really want to see a tangible return on my investment. I want to know that it's going to regain me. If I spend $500,000, I want to know it's going to gain me 1.5. We're not on a crap game, we're not rolling the dice to see if we get money back. Said, I'm offending a few people here that I really care a lot about, that really have embraced this program. I'm not against, come to Galt. I have to say, long-term resident, I think, look at the Galt Tower, go to a few spots, and that's about what Galt has to offer, other than what we really have is a tight community, where people still care about their neighbor, where they want to take care of each other, we watch out for each other's kids. That's why people still really want to come to Galt. Look at the property improvements that were listed on the chambers, I wonder who owns the property. Said, we're spending an awful lot of money on improving a building that I would think the city would own a building out there. If we want to open a visitor's center, I'm sure we have an empty office building somewhere in Galt that we can put a visitor's center, and not put a bunch of money into a building that isn't going to improve anybody's equity, other than that builder's or the owner of that building. Again, really didn't come here to talk, but to me, half a million dollars is still a lot of money. Spend it wisely, guys, because your grandkids are going to be paying it back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other comments, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, now that there's no other public comment, I just want to make a couple of statements. I've spent a lot of, not a lot of time, but some time with Madison and some of the other board members, and, and I appreciate you taking the, the time to, as Councilman Papino said, really bolster the proposals so that we really know what it is, and appreciate I, I think that it is time, at least in my mind, for us to make an investment in a visitor's center concept. I also believe we need to make an investment as a city into our economic development of our city and our businesses, including our economic development function in the city from the city's perspective. As, when I met with you, talked about a true partnership, where there's, you know, the investment, and on both sides, some stopgaps about, is this investment paying back where it, where it needs to be, and certainly is, is it being successful at those points that you lay out? I really foresee, and this may be just one of five talking here, but like I'd mentioned in our meetings, memorandum of understanding between the two organizations. I didn't hear that at all tonight, so I hope that that is, is something that we can do. I think that, but, but, but I do believe there's a, there's a time to do that. I would agree that, you know, the ARPA money is, is out there, and, but, but I would say this, and just like I mentioned in our meetings, the city, us five and the staff here, really need to make an investment in this at some level. And so whether or not that's ARPA money or general fund money, the way I look at it is that ARPA money is one time, and where is the commitment of the city if it's just ARPA money? If it is general fund money and TOT money built in and baked into an MOU, where we're working together collaboratively, and we meet those goals, then that's a long-term commitment to not only the businesses in this town, but certainly our residents. And as you mentioned, we have two tax measures that are based on sales tax. So I, the, the statement that we win, and we all win, absolutely, I just think how we get there needs to be very deliberate and collaborative and, and built in with a contract, so. Did I miss the contract part in here?
Yes.
Where was it?
Uh, I don't have a page number, but it is like the second to last page.
It talks about an, an MOU, it mentions it, we've looked at several MOUs with other cities, Sacramento, the city of Sacramento.
U's with, uh, other cities, Sacramento, the city of Sacramento, uh, with ARPA funding, did an M O U with the, uh, Black Chamber up there, and they had deliverables and, um, and the city had their, you know, their process, so definitely, we completely agree that an M O U would be required.
And I, too, just to touch on that, I certainly appreciate what the last public commenter mentioned, um, and I think that there is definitely a need to spend that money very responsibly and be very conservative with that, um, I'm a business owner myself, I, I'm not just going to throw money out the door at advertising, it has to be, um, well-thought-out, there has to be good projections associated with that, um, and we need to measure, you know, the cost benefit of each time a dollar goes out the door, um, rest assured, this money is not, we're not taking it to Sky River and putting it in a slot machine and hoping for the best, um, I promise you, you, our board is made up of 15 very savvy business people, and we all work collaboratively to, uh, along with, hopefully, a future executive director, to make sure that all of the money spent, there is going to be a return on the investment, and we can't guarantee that unfortunately, but we can get some pretty good projections, um, and of course, measure our success year after year, so we can adjust and change as needed.
And I, I wasn't suggesting that you wouldn't spend it wisely, I just think that if.
No, absolutely.
If you're doing a partnership, and it, it, a point I want to make is, Amy talked about data that she can get, and then the next sentence, you guys talked about the same data that you're looking into, I, I would hope that.
It's different.
A partner, a partnership.
To them, to Amy, so this is different data, that we, that we were going after, a different source, we'll say.
Both would be very useful, but we did talk to Amy too, and she was planning on helping us with that.
Uh, totally appreciate that, what I was getting at was, I would hope that that data sharing, whether it's different or the same, would be, become one, so that we're not duplicating efforts, I think that's responsible, um, spending of our money, and so if, but again, that can all be laid out in, uh, a fashion that I can see, um, and that the citizens' money, uh, whether it's ARPA or T O T or other general fund money, um, is spent wisely, and that we are, um, doing it responsibly together, if that makes sense, so that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, and that's nothing that you guys haven't heard, so, I appreciate your, uh, presentation, and I'll certainly look it over more as well.
Thank you, I do have a question, um, what is the next step in this?
Well, it has to come to avoid a vote at some point, so I guess if you, I can't really say, maybe I have to wait till council comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think council has an opportunity to, they want to bring something back, they can do it at the end of the, end of tonight, um, or, or not, but this was just on a presentation for tonight, thank you.
So does that, when it comes back, I'm assuming someone, like, I'm assuming you, more questions will pop up, right, and that can be an open communication still, right?
Well, the, the.
We'll come prepared.
Basically, the process would be, if someone at the end proposes and there's consensus to have it as an agenda item, it gets agendized, if you guys bring an M O U or something that can be looked over by that fine gentleman, and, uh, everybody can come to a consensus, then, you know, we either extend it or agree to it, in, in the simplest terms, uh, and with that, uh, there's a long ways to go to get to.
You guys.
Thank you, uh, to get to a public comment, Madam Clerk, could you read the public comment statement, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items, the public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda, please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes, consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda, public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. Right now, we have three, um, written comments and one online, I will take the one online because he's, this person has been up. Bee Zastro online, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, council members, um, I am, uh, just wanted to speak briefly in the public comment, um, regarding an issue with one of our city streets in the city of Galt, being that, uh, Cost Way and Hamel Way, it's, uh, as many people have driven it before, it's an uncontrolled intersection, along with the fact that it's a very abnormally large intersection, um, in that area, um, vehicles, uh, drive, according to the California Vehicle Code, is 23103, which is reckless driving, along with speed contests, which falls under 23109 of the California Vehicle Code, this has been an ongoing issue since the Parker Creek Development has, uh, been placed there and built there, that's where I built my first home, and I'm a first-time Galt resident being in that area, the only downside is the fact that when I hear, as recently as last night, vehicles doing burnouts in that intersection, and unfortunately, a phone call to the Galt Police Department will be a delayed response, given that that vehicle is just about done by the time I make my phone call, and the vehicle is gone, I've made numerous phone calls to the Galt Police Department, they have responded, but unfortunately, the vehicles have left, same thing with other residents in that area, so I would like the city council, along with the Department of Public Works for the city of Galt, to look into a possible addition of temporary barriers that can be implemented in the ground on the road to prevent that from happening, and this is something that a call log from the police department can be, uh, reviewed to see how many times people have called, it's not only on the weekends, it's during the week, it's also all hours of, uh, the day, it doesn't just happen at one particular time, I know a lot of us that live in that area are frustrated, uh, I spent an hour and 40 minutes on this Zoom phone call, just to speak with you guys about that, and I want it to be brought to your attention, um, along with the police chief as well.
Duly noted, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll have staff look at that and pull the data for that, and bring it back, uh, to you through the city manager.
Thank you.
Next, Bob Ballye.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, uh, two items that I want to briefly discuss, bring to your attention, an update, uh, wearing my hat as a commissioner, uh, an update on the, uh, creating a senior needs emergency contact list, that you, Mr. Mayor and I, uh, discussed, um, a couple of weeks ago, and you came before the commission, and, uh, you, um, suggested that we come up with such a list, if possible, I wanted to let you know that we are in the process of doing just that, we're working with, uh, Agency on Aging, Area Four, and by extension with 211 Resources, uh, Call Center, to create this list, and we're hoping to have it completed by the end of this month, and we will share it with you and your fellow, um, council members, and also will publicize it in the, in the Resource Center, in the Resource Center and the Resource Guidelines that we, um, do every year for the community, um, as a whole, uh, Mr. Germ, uh, Mr. German, Ayan, is the, uh, A- Agency Area Four, uh, representative, and he's the, that organization is the umbrella organization over the 211 services, and they are available to, to seniors and to the city council, they want to talk to you guys, make a presentation, a short presentation, about the type of services that are available with those organizations, specific to seniors, so that would be very informative for you all, and, uh, if you are inclined to go with that, then just please let me know, and, uh, I will, uh, I will facilitate such a, get together in the usual way that such, uh, things are being done by the city. Uh, now I'm going to talk to you briefly about, uh, as a person, a, a private citizen, um, about alleged abuses, neglect, unfair treatment, et cetera, at three of six senior apartment complexes in Galt, that have come to my attention, initially as a commissioner, but because of, uh, but by these cities, with the city's, uh, guidance, uh, I could only act as a private citizen, not as a commissioner, so, uh, I have been involved in listening to these complaints, uh, these, these allegations, I have, uh, given guidance, uh, on how to approach, how to write a letter to, uh, responsible agencies, uh, to, that could address this, these issues, I facilitated, um, meetings with residents at, at these communities, and, um, a, a couple of city council members have attended at least one of those, including, uh, um, Dan Natoli, uh, was involved in one of those meetings, and, uh, or Don, I should, I should say, Don Natoli was involved in one of those meetings, and I wanted to tell you that, uh, the seniors in those communities, with all of those efforts that, that I've been making, that they have been, uh, trying to do on their own, these senior citizens in dealing with these agencies, uh, they are very frustrated that nothing is being done to correct the problems that they're experiencing, at least in their mind, that's what they feel, and so I wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, um, I am also ready now to escalate the matter to the county level, I have set a, uh, facilitated a meeting between, uh, the new county supervisor, Pat Hume, and myself, and, uh, one of the council members, uh, uh, indicated an interest in attending this meeting, and, uh, next, if nothing goes with that, I will, I'm ready to go to the state and federal agencies, to ask them to investigate all of these senior apartment complexes, where these, uh, complaints are coming about, in terms of the frustrated seniors, uh, I can't advocate for them, but that's being resolved right now, because I've, I've met with each one of you on, on including advocacy, advocacy as part of the commission's missions, uh, mission stated in the future, and, uh, I, I thank you for listening to my concerns, and, uh, last but not least,
um. Excuse me, Bob, you are out of time.
Okay.
I, I will touch base with you outside the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Greg Davidson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, um, first, some, uh, long overdue thanks, when I first addressed the city council, and, and this is seven years ago, so, uh, none of you remember then, I complained about, uh, the ADA access, we had to sit in a wheelchair in the hall, in the walkway here, and since then, they have put two cutouts in, and I, I would really like to thank the city for doing that, uh, secondly, thanks to, um, the Absent Parks and Recreation Director, uh, for the, uh, fine job that the company that they, uh, contracted with did on Fumasi Oak Preserve, um, it, it's a very, very, uh, beautiful, uh, area, and now that it's all cleaned up, it looks, uh, that much nicer, um, in addition, uh, I had a problem with a shopping cart, spoke to this, uh, council member, Farmer, about it, he suggested the, uh, Galt Connect, I called it into the Galt Connect, and two days later, got a reply that it had been picked up and returned to Walmart, so thank you very much for that, um, I, I'd also like to thank, uh, Bonnie and the Galt Herald for, uh, providing both sides of the argument on, uh, whether or not Galt should, uh, look at, uh, having a cannabis dispensary, uh, one of the points that was brought up in a, in a first letter to the, uh, paper was that, uh, it was titled, uh, Cannabis Worse Than Tobacco, and then they, uh, cannabis is the gateway drug, so I did some research online, uh, the Centers for Disease Control and the National Institute on Drug Abuse, I'd like to read that to you now, it says, what are gateway drugs, any substance that people use to alter their brain chemistry, per the Centers for Disease Council, the three most popular gateway drugs, or substances used to alter the brain's chemistry, are caffeine, nicotine, and alcohol, per the National Institute for on drug abuse, tobacco shares a number of significant similarities with other drugs, especially in the way in which it is used and abused, according to the N I D A, tobacco use is the leading cause of death and disability in the United States, in addition, a number of studies have shown that people who begin using tobacco products at an early age have a greater chance of developing other substance abuse issues later in life, such as an addiction to substances like alcohol, cocaine, or heroin, cigarette smoking causes approximately 480,000 deaths in the United States per year, including secondhand smoke, deaths from cannabis remain at zero, um, I provided each of you, uh, the city manager and the city attorney, with a copy of this receipt from my last dispensary purchase, on this purchase of $120, I paid $44.34 in total taxes, I was happy to do that, knowing that I got safe, uh, and tested products, additionally, each trip to an out-of-town dispensary generates another $100 to $200 in additional economic activity, as we don't drive to Sacramento, just to go to the dispensary, that generates even more economic activity for out-of-town businesses to say nothing of security, check-in, and sales clerk employment at the dispensary, why should Galt residents be compelled to travel to Sacramento or Stockton to visit a dispensary and provide tax enforcement, ancillary spending to those communities, some people say that since we can procure cannabis there, we don't need it here in Galt, to that, I would say that Galtonians can procure a cup of coffee, get a haircut, eat some sushi, get a hotel room, hire an electrician, or buy hardware items in either of those two cities, why don't we make them do that, the answer is manifold, taxes and economic activity from those businesses stay here in Galt, the jobs those businesses provide for Galt and the convenience of Galt residents, in closing, the gold standard of public polling is widely recognized as the Gallup Poll, in 2019, 2020, and 2021, the number of Americans who favor full legalization of cannabis was steady at 68%, and a total of 37 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands regulate some form of cannabis for use by qualified individuals, Galt should provide a safe, well-regulated and protected cannabis dispensary for its citizens, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Is one more comment, correct?
Yes. Carol Smith?
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff, you'll forgive my nervousness and my raspy voice.
You're fine.
So my comment kind of, it segues to the comment of the last gentleman, I appreciate all your research, and thank you to the ladies for your research and your forward thanking for Galt, I really appreciate, I think it's needed, I received a survey recently regarding, uh, I guess the legalization or one being able to purchase cannabis here in Galt, I wasn't happy about that survey, so the first question, as I recall, it asked if it were legal here in Galt, the sale, and I said no, and I was expecting that to be the end of the, of the survey, of the questioning, but the next one mentioned a 10% taxation of the sale of cannabis, if it were to be so, allowed to be sold here in Galt, now I can think of a lot of things that Galt needs besides of the sale of cannabis, we have very little activities for our youth, there's no movie theater. We have very little activities for our youth. There's no movie theater. There's no bowling alley, no roller rink, which I was told in the past there was some of these activities for our youth. I'd like to see some modern Christmas decorations on the west side of Galt. I appreciate the ones that they did put up this year. The ones prior, they were prior to my birth. So I'm aging myself. I don't mind. But yes, I was, I appreciated what they did do. I'd like to see some beautiful flowers out here on the west side of Galt, as they do on the east side of Galt, because we're all taxpayers here. And I think it's relevant, places to shop that would bring in revenue. We have to go outside to city, sister cities to go shopping in Lodi, which I used to live in Lodi, fine city. We have to go to Elk Grove. We're giving that, those cities revenue. And we're needed, we need the revenue here. Now, I hate to say, I'm interested in the revenue that cannabis would bring in. I'd hate for this fine city to be known as the city of the flea market and where you can go and get cannabis. I don't think it's legal in Lodi. We had a conversation about that. Or in Elk Grove. I did not do any research. I beg your pardon, but I did not. But it just bothers me. I have three daughters that I raised here in Galt. They are all successful young women, two of which are veterans. And I liked the fall, the small city feel. We're 25,000 plus here. We were 20,000 plus when I moved here 20-some years ago. I just think that there's more things that we can do better to, in the progress of Galt, such as the visitor center. I went on, I visited 26 states on a road trip some years ago. They all had visitor centers. So I'm just, you know, I don't want to be cantankerous or grumpy about it. I just think that our funds can be, and our revenues and our activities and our thinking can be better spent with activities for our youth. They are our future. And we need to make sure that they have a safe place to go here in town for activities. And then, yes, if you build it, they will come. Thank you, sirs and ma'am.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, that should be it for public comment. Next is I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and/or committees. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Nothing to report tonight.
Councilman Papadou?
It's past Thursday. We had a meeting of the Metro Cable Commission. And it was largely housekeeping items, amended bylaws to conform to the newly approved JPA that was finally approved by all of the cities involved. And in line with that, we changed the election of our chair and vice chair to this meeting to be consistent with the January appointment where the county and Sacramento appoint their attendees to appear in place of the elected officials. And we will, we approved a MOU with Faith TV. And in our next meeting, we should get a legal decision on Faith TV's eligibility to get funding like the rest of the programmers. And we will also then take on the budget for the year.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilman Lozano?
Just real quick, I had a land use and natural resources committee meeting last Thursday. And I, we talked about Green Means Go funding recommendations. This is the program that SECOG went to the state in response to the 19% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions that was levied by the state. And so this program was put into place as a pilot throughout the state so that we could achieve that a little better. The catch here, not the catch, what the basis for it is, is to receive state funding. So there has been some state funding in the budget. This, the recommendations for the planning and capital categories were given. Let me double check on the number. 31.3 million throughout the combined area, the region, so six county region. And so we're moving that on to the full board for recommendation for approval. And if anybody has any time or has any questions about it, I'd be, I'd love to sit down and talk to you about how they get to that, those recommendations. It's a long, drawn-out process by the staff, very thorough. And so the methodology is approved by the board. The other thing we talked about were the blueprint pathways related to land use assumptions. So in 2025, hopefully, will, will be the year that we have to put together the MTPSCS, which is the Sustainable Communities Strategy and Transportation Plan. And so there's different ways to look at how to get there. Long story short is that we are looking at different land use assumptions, low growth, no growth, fast growth. And we'll look at traffic patterns in the same sense. And there's three different areas that we'll look at eventually. And after significant public input, including, they're likely going to be down here at our Saturday market talking to people about it. Hopefully, in 2025, we'll start to bring that forward. And I don't want to talk about it, but there is an item on our consent calendar about that. And some legislator putting forward a two-year extension for that. So instead of the end of 2023, it'd be the end of 2025 that we would have that in. So that's all I have to report. Oh, and the Consumist CSD Two by Two I attended also on Thursday. And we just talked about fire response, the fire, how the fire department works here in the city, and the funding that is surrounded by that. And so that took up the bulk of the meeting. And then I think we talked a little bit about some projects that they have going up there related to recreation centers and things, you know, which I think some of that information will be good as Walker Park design starts coming through. And we look at potentially, I think it's Phase Four Recreation Center out there at Walker Park. So it was kind of interesting to hear what they're doing on that level. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I attended the youth commission last night in these chambers. They are going to lose four members, so they're advertising for new ones through various ways. And they're having a donation fundraiser for the youth commission on April 1st. So please dig deep and give generously. That takes care of that item. Is there any? Nope, that takes care of that item. Thank you. Next is information consent calendar. You had something to say on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I just want to make a note to city council that there was a slight typo on the last minute under city manager comments. I said the city manager meant with Galt Place, and it should state Galt Plaza.
Thank you, duly noted. Since we're chatting, is there any public comment on this item?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. So it is recommended that items one through six be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do any of the council members would like to pull any of these items for a separate discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item J4 and J5 for a couple of questions.
Okay, we'll pull item J4 and J5. So with that, do I have, there's no, nothing else? Do I have a motion to receive file warrants for a period ending February 23, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting for February 21, 2023, treasurer's report for a period ending January 2023, and support for AB 350, regional transportation plan, Sacramento area council governors to introduce January 1, 2023, referred to the Assembly Transportation Committee?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Farmer, seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papadou?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And next, we will discuss item J4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item J4 is the C Street Enhancement Project Construction and Consultant Agreement Award to Somas Consulting. I kind of had, I had a few questions, but within the staff report, and I know that, and I'm maybe looking for some direction from Frank here on this, but I know that this particular item is to the, to award the construction management to KSN. But within the staff report, there was discussion about the increase in the project. And I'm not here to dive into the weeds about that. I just, it mentioned that there was some funding options that would, like, one of them was mentioned, maybe diverting funds from the Walnut Interchange project to pick up the overage or whatever. So I'm just wondering, is that something we are going to have that's going to be brought back to us for another discussion? Because that's not within this discussion, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. Yeah, to answer Councilmember Farmer's question, we are basically, at this point in time, we've applied for additional funding through SECOG, an application. We expect to hear back on the status of that application by May. And so if, if the answer is no, we don't get the funding on that application, then we would look to the alternative sources. And those are really primarily two alternative sources. One is our Fund 29, which is our Measure A, half-cent transportation sales tax for the region. There's about $4.6 million that are unallocated in that fund currently. The other source would be potentially, we already have received about a $2 million grant for Walnut Avenue improvements. It's not the interchange, just to make a slight correction. There's two projects on Walnut, so. So we previously got a grant award of about $2 million from SECOG for Walnut Avenue improvements to do a sidewalk gap closure, some paving, you know, just heavy maintenance type improvements there. They have indicated that that is a potential for us to take the money from Walnut and apply it to C Street. If we did that, then we would have to backfill Walnut with our own dollars, i.e. Measure A. So it's a little bit of a shell game there. It might be a little bit hard to follow. But those are the two options that we're looking at, so.
So after you hear back on the SECOG grant application in May, we should know kind of if we're going to need to look for alternative sources, right?
Correct, yeah. And we would bring a recommendation to you at that point, yes.
I saw the cost of the project actually doubled, mainly due to, I guess, instead of sealing the street, there's come to discover that we probably needed to replace, which I know C Street's getting kind of bad in a lot of spots, some potholes and some things.
Yeah, the biggest, yeah, and, and my understanding from what the original plan was when it was coupled with the Fourth Street is they had just a minor, if you will, treatment on the surface plan for it, which is obviously much cheaper. In looking at it, the road, apologize, the road is what we call highly crowned, meaning if you look at where the cross slope is from, say, the gutter to the center line, it's a pretty severe cross slope. And so what happens is you start to have issues with people trying to get in and out of driveways and cars dragging sometimes, those kinds of situations. Not to mention that the pavement is in, in, you know, significantly deteriorated shape. So, I mean, we'd hate to just do this really nice gateway project and do kind of a, you know, essentially on the cheap, if you will, on the asphalt. And then in five years, you know, myself or whoever coming to you and saying, hey, I'm going to need another few million dollars to do this right. The thing is, is to do it right, right now. And it'll be good for 20 years plus to reconstruct the road and do it the right way.
I agree, yeah. So in reading the staff report, I came across, and this is why I think I asked if you, if someone from KSN was going to be present, because maybe they can answer if you're not able to.
Sure.
It talked about an ADL survey, and then talked about there were some costs associated with that. And I was like, okay, well, what's, you know, ADL? And it talked about aerial deposited lead. I'm like, well, what is that? So I started geeking out, like, trying to research, what is this? And apparently, it's lead deposits that accumulated pre-1974 from when we had leaded gas, and that would deposit on roadways. And they found an excessive amount at C and Seventh Street in that area. So because of that, they talked about you have to, like, remove some of the soil or do some things to it. I'm not going to get into all that. But in my diving into finding out what all this, what this was exactly, and the fact that there was a cost that we had to pay because of that, and it was, it was an unforeseen thing, I found the, you know, the whole thing from, I guess it was from 2016, from the state where it talks about, you know, you have to have these things. So, but what I found was that nowhere could I, in the whole entire document of this ADL and how they're requiring this now, it only referred to that this was required for Caltrans state highway projects or easements. So my question is, why is C and Seventh Street considered Caltrans jurisdiction unless my research is inaccurate and that's required for all projects? Can someone answer that for me?
I mean, I can give you my answer. And, and I can tell you from my former experience in another agency for many years doing road projects, it applies throughout the state. So I don't know if that's a, you know, mischaracterization, or maybe it was more broadly interpreted after that. But I can tell you, the Air District, they're very, you know, serious about aerially deposited lead and mitigating it. So it applies to all cities and counties. I've experienced it many times in doing road projects, so, yeah.
Okay, like I said, it just, I couldn't find, and again, and definitely sounds like something California would require, right? How much lead's left over from 1974? Okay, and then my last question was really just, I like the fact that I, I know you talked about KSN was your go-to company that you really liked their proposal. I read their proposal very thoroughly. It seemed like they're very capable and all that. And, but I wanted to just reiterate one piece of something that they wrote, I think was very, very important with this project. And they're sitting in the room, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Neil Cole here.
No need to come up, Mr. Neil, but I just want to reiterate that there was a lot, a lot of discussion and very in-depth time taking with this project to reiterate something that you wrote about public relations and property owner coordination was very critical to this project. And I just want to make sure that that is not understated. For those of us who lived here long enough, remember the Lincoln Way project, which was a complete disaster, in my opinion. We had businesses that were blocked from driveways for like a year. It was just really bad. And so I think Public Works understands. I just want you guys to understand, as the people that are going to be managing this project, that that could not go understated. Key, communication's key with these businesses. Just please, they're all reasonable people. We've talked to all them. Mayor Vandenberg and I, I think, we went, you know, business to business on the entire length and talked to each business and rolled out the blueprints in front of them and said, do you have any problems? Do you have any concerns? To make sure that there was nothing, I don't want a business coming to me going, no one told us this, or I've been, you know, no one's getting back to me on this, or this has happened and I'm losing business. We don't want those conversations to happen. So I would appreciate the utmost care with that. And I just wanted to state that, since we were talking about the item. So thank you for coming tonight, just for that. I do appreciate you being here. That's all I have on this item, unless somebody else has something to say.
Anyone else? So for myself, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Farmer just finished saying. That was a lot of walking, a lot of discussions, and I'm glad you addressed that head-on. So for me, on page four, it's kind of the same thing as what Mr. Farmer said, you know, the paragraph just below center. "The downside of using Measure A funds is that other essential roadway maintenance needed would be deferred. Reallocation of federal funds programmed for the Walnut Avenue project to the projects require the city to backfill these federal funds with local funds." And you defined the local funds in the worst-case scenario.
Yes, as I touched on before, the local funds would be either our Fund 29 or Measure A funds, or it would be the gas tax funds, which are from Fund II. It would likely be Fund 29, though, in this case, so.
So that would not be general funds?
Correct, it would not be general fund.
Okay. I just want to always be cognizant of those sorts of things as we move.
Understood.
It's always on my mind. Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
So having said that, do I have a motion to C Street, to, yeah, for the C Street Enhancement Project, CP 1520F, Construction Management Consultant Agreement Award as amended, amended number three of, man, is this my glass or something? Palmas Consulting Agreement, SEQA exempt 15301C Palmas Consulting Agreement, SEQA exempt 15301C, and NEMA exempt 23CFR 771 dash points 117 sub C sub three.
Mr. Mayor, make sure we go to public comment. You don't have to read that again, though.
That's good. Dyslexia is a challenge, I'm telling you, with all the, with that's written. Is there a public comment?
No public comment.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Councilman Farmer. I second the motion. Do, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion moves passes five zero. Next, we will discuss item J five.
Yeah, on this item, I just had a, and I did speak briefly with Director Hoffman today, so thank you, Craig, for that. I, I just, I felt like I still wanted to just bring this up, just to, just to point out something really quickly. And this is regarding the housing element. This is pretty deep in, page 43. There was a section here where it talks about, "The city shall update the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as necessary to outline facility needs and funding mechanisms." So what I take from that is, just what it says, is that we need to update the Parks and Rec Master Plan to, you know, identify facility needs. What do we need in town? You know, what are some things that we future? And obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about this kinds of thing recently with park, you know, facilities being, not having enough of them and this and that. The, the, the comment that was included in this was that Parks and Recreation Department has updated the Walkermark Master Plan and has created a master plan for the Galt Market slash Sports Complex property. Staff will be returning to City Council on January 17th with that. I did look at that. I don't know that we came back with that on 17th, but that was, wasn't, wasn't, really wasn't my concern. It was more about, I don't really think that, I, I actually very much would like to see at some point in overall, and I think maybe we'll be getting that with some of the Measure Q priorities that we're going to be coming back with. But when I, when I see, you know, a master plan for Parks and Recreation in Galt to outline what our needs are as a whole, I don't think that the Galt Market Plan specifically targeted that piece of property, or the, or the Walker Park Plan, really is what that means. I feel like those are very targeted. Those are more like, hey, here's what we're going to do to remedy. But I'm looking for more like, here's the greater need. We've identified a more need for X and Y and C. And then, you know, as a, as a, as a, as a solution for those would be, well, we got more at Walker Park, and that's going to help solve that. And we got, you know, the Galt Market Plan, and that could possibly do this. But I'm just saying, I'm looking for a more of a bigger, broader picture on that. So anyways, this just jumped out at me. I, I just would like to see that, because I think it's very important to me, Parks and Rec. And, and I don't really have any questions, per se, but I just wanted to, to say, I know Armando's not here tonight, so, but I just wanted to say it publicly. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the annual 2023 Galt General Plan Housing Element Progress Report for 2022 exempt from SEQA under Government Code Section 65400.
Public comment, two.
Twice in a row, and I wrote it down. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Spandario.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Councilman Farmer. Do you have a second? Second by Council, Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye, motion passes five zero. That's that. Next is, doesn't look like we have any scheduled matters of public hearing, correct?
None this evening.
Okay, next is L, Regular Calendar, Police Department, Subject Contract Services with Sacramento County Animal Care and Regulation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you tonight is a draft contract proposal from the County of Sacramento, Animal Care and Regulation, for a full-service contract that would expire on June 30th of 2027. In August of 2015, the council approved a contract with Sacramento County Care, Animal Care and Regulation for modified services. This was due expressly based on the escalating cost of having a full-service contract here in the community. At that time, we were paying $40,000 a year for the full-service contract. And at that point, as former city manager, Mr. Beerman and I worked through the issue, we were trying to avoid a cost at that time, which was going to be $120,000 a year, and something that was not doable for the city. So ultimately, that contract passed. That contract has been in place and renewed, and we've worked on that model since that time. Currently, the city is paying $120,000, you know, some eight years later, for a modified service. We reviewed this contract with Sacramento County and looked at all options, actually, my staff did. And as a result, Sacramento County has proposed the attached full-service contract, as I mentioned. And specific details of the response are in Attachment One of the contract for reference. The proposed annual cost for the first year of this contract is $198,096. This is based on a intake of animals that was in 2021, or 2021, I believe, which was based on 210 animals that were taken in by animal control. And as a formula that they're using, bookended on their total number of animals they took in, which is 1.9%. Our 210 is 1.9% of their total animals. And their budget of, a lot of math here, but their budget of $10,376,000 takes that cost to that 198. The county agreed that the better methodology, over discussions with that group, is that the animal intake number was more appropriate than the population-based formula. Had they held the position of it being a population-based formula, a full-service contract to this community would be $440,000 and simply not doable. So I acknowledge the good work by Annette Bedsworth, who's in the back standing, ready, ready to come up and answer any questions you do when I'm done talking here. But her forward thinking, since she took over this program in early 2022, has helped us tremendously, and I think will be good for the community. A couple of things I want to add is we looked at other contracting options, specifically with the city of Elk Grove. They don't have the capacity to take on our numbers, and we're not, not interested in contracting. We also looked at what I call the Folsom model, where they have in-house staff and contracting with the SPCA. There's a lot of, there's a heavy lift in that model. However, our back-of-the-napkin work on that looked like minus purchasing vehicles and other capital expenses would be about $350,000 to $400,000 a year annually to the city of Galt. And that's assuming that SPCA would have capacity, based on our costing of that program out of the gate. We didn't go any further, because, again, I knew it wasn't doable for this council to look at, and we had this other option, which I think is a sound option from the county. One other item I'd like to add is that the county notified us if we felt like we needed additional services from an animal control officer in the community, and if, should that be necessary now or in the future, they could add additional position with a contract amendment. And that, I've, it was actually $102,600. I called it $105,000 in the staff report, but that would be an additional cost to the city. I don't think it's prudent to propose that to this council for consideration at this time, but the department will continue to monitor the services provided by the county and determine if we need that up, uppurchasing of that additional position. But that is something that we can do going forward if we felt like that was, that was appropriate. And lastly, a question came up about the billing, so I've inserted, inserted that in the fiscal analysis. The building this year will be broken down into two payment models, one for the limited service to the duration that we switch to the full-service model, which will be after the Board of Supervisors approves this contract, if this board, or if this council approves this contract, it still needs to go to the board, and then it'll take effect. And that's why we're asking for an additional general fund appropriation of $15,000 for that offset, based on what we think that anticipated timing is. And then we will build, if approved, that $80,000 into next year's budget build contract, which I'll see later this year. With that, that's my staff report. I'm sure there's going to be questions from the council, operational and otherwise, so I'll leave it to the experts who actually do the job for the four-legged folks. If you want to do that now or after, public comment, whatever you choose, but Annette is here and available for you.
Council comments, questions?
Thank you, Chief, for giving us a thorough report. I know you did very hard, very hard work on that. Just for the clarification, $120,000 a year we was doing, just only limited service, right? And now we're going to enter a contract, if it's approved, $190,000 for full service. Can you a little bit explain what's the difference between limited service and full service? What kind of extra benefit be the citizen on that new contract if we pass?
Okay, I'm going to have Ms., yes, she's going to take that, because it specifically impacts her staff and the service they deliver, and so she knows it inside out, and I think it's fair you hear from animal control.
Good evening. My name is Annette Bedsworth, and I am the Director for Sacramento County Animal Care Services. We are no longer Animal Care and Regulation. We changed that name before the Board of Supervisors, trying to become that progressive animal services this, this community deserves. What the difference is between limited services, I would never sign off on a contract under my name with that, because you are not doing any service to this community. The service you're getting now with the full service means you're taking away the police department from delivering animal services. They don't need to be doing that. That's my job, and we'll be happy to do that and take that over. You'll be getting full services that the Sacramento County residents get. You're going to get the same services that they receive.
So, you know, how that looks is, for example, if there is a loose dog in the neighborhood and, and somebody calls 311, which will be the point of contact for the program and not the police department, animal control will come down and retrieve the animal from whomever picked that animal up. What's happening now is people, it's, well, it's a hybrid approach. Either people are bringing them to the front lobby of the police department, or sometimes our staff's throwing them in the back of the patrol car and bringing them to the police department. So it's a, it's a hybrid approach. But we will get out of that business of housing and delivering, yeah, animals, yeah, delivering animal services.
There's a lot to delivering animal services. For one, in a progressive shelter, we're vaccinating animal that comes in on intake, where you don't have that capacity here. We do that at the shelter. In Sacramento County, any owner surrenders, go to Sacramento County SPCA, because we have that partnership with them. You're not delivering animals to the police department. And another attempt with a new program that we just implemented February 1st, because you always want to reduce, your budget is based upon animal intake, so you're always trying to keep that animal intake, right? It helps you with your budget, but it also helps me as a shelter, because I'm a very full shelter from a very large county. So February 1st, we entered into a new program, what's called Community Spay and Neuter, which is the clinic right directly next door to our shelter. So anybody in your community that traps cats or has cats can deliver them there with an appointment to have the cat spayed or neutered, and we will incur the cost. And that's another benefit. One, the cat's not entering my shelter, so you're not going to incur that cost, and the cat's getting spayed, neutered, and returned to the community.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms., say your name for me.
That's worth.
That's worth, okay. I have many questions. I'm just going to ask a few, then I'm going to let my, my colleagues here. So it was mentioned that you're going to take the, and first of all, I very much appreciate, as the chief knows, one of my emails that I sent to him, a concern was that I wanted to remove the police out of being the first point of contact with the animal. I just feel like they have more important things to do, and I just feel like it was not in the best interest. And so thank you for, you know, that. I did take the old contract and the new, and went line for line. Actually, did have a couple of phone calls with some local animal advocates, who have very, been very vocal and very concerning, and they, they do very much do this on a regular basis in our community for free. And we went item for item and talked and just dove into all the verbiage and came out with questions that we thought. And sometimes we just answered our own questions, but some of them that we had were, it does mention here that, that the city, this is part of the contract, this is page five of 13, Section Three. It says that "The city shall have secure and humane holding kennels and cages and hold animals collected to allow." So there is, in fact, still, at least based on this contract, some requirement that we do have some holding facilities. I know, Chief, you mentioned that we are, your, the Sallyport was going to be taken back for some other purposes, so.
We can do that. So that's obviously an oversight, because I don't have any expectation that they hold animals here.
Okay, so that's not in the case then. Okay. So before, so is that something that we could get removed, just contingent on the approval tonight, out of this, or something?
Yeah, we build into the approval in a form approved by the city attorney. So if there are some small tweaks that we need to do, we can do that without bringing it back.
Okay, great. Next question is, there was some concern in the past about, you know, when PD was handling the animals, that there wasn't a, a real in-depth documentation process of some sort. And I'm not going to go into that, or whether there was or wasn't, or whatever, it's just the community's perception, or their, their thought that it was, and maybe they're in fact. But I do know that in the new contract, it does talk about that there is to be, and I'm looking for in the section, but as I'm looking, that there will be, here we go, page four, item E, Animal Status Information Technology. "The county shall maintain software and technology to provide city with real-time information regarding all animals received from the jurisdiction." So I'm assuming that you, you document the animals come in, there's something posted on webpage or somewhere where somebody, or somebody, and you provide that to the, to PD. So if someone was to call, this is the second part of the question, I'm sorry. So if I was to call PD and go, my dog's missing, you know, have you seen it? I'm assuming they would just say, will you, they would just, you guys would just defer us to them, and then they would have that data to see if they intake the dog that matched my descrip, is that correct, or?
It's correct, but most people would know that you would just go to our website, because the website's updated every 30 minutes with every animal that's on site.
Okay. Well, you'd be surprised how many people don't know stuff in the town. Have you, you have the same questions asked, like, no matter how many times you say it, there's still asking the same question.
It's going to be an education program, since we're taking over.
Yeah, so then my last question, at least for the moment, is just to be absolutely clear on how this would be. First point of contact for someone is going to be dial 311. They're not going to be calling Galt PD for animal issues anymore.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for more. I have some more questions, but I'll see, maybe my colleagues will have the same ones I do, so.
I actually don't have any questions. I really like what you did. It was a very good catch there, Mr. Farmer, on the item that needs to be removed. Councilman Lozano, do you have anything?
I do. I just, real quick, if somebody inadvertently calls the non-emergency number, can we transfer them to 311?
I think we, I don't believe we can transfer. We would just instruct them to call 311.
Okay. I just have, like, two questions. When were the, the fees last? Evaluated. Well, it's evaluated every year based.
What kind of fees? What kind of fees are you referring?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific. Licensing fees, sorry.
Oh, licensing fees? I don't know if it's been evaluated. I'd have to check and see how many years it's been evaluated.
And I'm thinking more for the, we, we set our own licensing fees through our code, right, municipal code?
Board of Supervisors set the fees.
Yeah, the Board of Supervisors adopts the fees, and the county's collected the fees, and it's been an offset to the contract cost. That's how that's operated internally.
Okay.
So whether they're, how they're updating their master fee schedule like we do, how often they're doing that, I can't, you know, we can look at that, but there is a whole fee schedule and penalties and so on for different things.
Okay, and what I read in the contract is that it, it, it actually is paid to the city and then as a separate process, so we may want to.
The county would, well, it's a billing reduction. So I, I would get in the bill, it would say, you know, what the contract cost is for the year, and it would offset the revenue received through licensing, which would reduce my cost.
Got it. That makes perfect sense, but I just want to make sure we're doing that according to the contract.
Agreed.
So we may have to look at C, under C licensing.
We'll look at that. What page is that on?
Two of 13.
Thank you.
And then do we happen to know, just off the top of your head, what our revenue is on the licensing per year?
I don't.
I don't. And historically, animal services, that's not a big revenue generator, because we're not proactive.
Right, what, what I'm getting at is, is I want to see what, what offset.
That's going to be.
Yeah, what the offset.
I can check, and back to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I can pass it through the city manager's office.
Okay, cool, perfect. That's it, that's all I have. Good job and good work on this. I know it's been a, a long road, and, and I'm glad we have a full-service contract where we're going to be providing our citizens and our four-legged friends the best service money can buy. Thanks.
I think it is a great service, not only to the community, but the animals and the county. It's a great partnership, really delivery of animal services.
Very, very glad to see it. You have any questions?
I'm very appreciative of the contract, and my question was asked offline, but I'll, or asked and answered offline, but I'll bring it up now, since it was brought up in public comment, which we don't have any tonight, do we?
Well, I was going to ask it right after you.
Okay, anyway, regarding repeated animals taken off, and I was informed that there's a first time, second time, and third time increasing fee. a first time, second time, and third time increasing fee, which will hopefully dissuade some of the repeated things by apparently careless pet owners. That's all I have.
You would think so, but when you look at the percentage, it's a very small percentage to come in third, and a small percentage for the second, and then what you find is just people leave their pets in the shelter, and then it becomes my problem again because we go full. So it's a vicious circle.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I I have some additional questions, Mr. Mayor. One is a financial question. So I I understand the term, the methodology where you came up with the pricing, and I and I appreciate the fact that it looks like we're getting a good value. But I was concerned, just just to be transparent about what the what-ifs, there is, there the the numbers were based on the 2020 and 2021 intake numbers under our modified contract, so that number was 210, so that's how many animals were intaked. So we then based the number on that. So I'm just trying to understand, just so we know what we're going into with eyes wide open here. I would think that if we were under a modified contract, which means we weren't intaking as many animals, that now there would definitely be an increase in intake, I would think, especially because we're a couple of years later, that there is a possibility we could go over that 210. If that should happen, is, how are we billed? Is it per animal cost? Because I did some simple math, and 198,000 divided by 210, and that can't be how you guys are billing it, is like $900 an animal. I know that can't be right, but, so if we go over, right, let's say at the end of the year, we went over by 30 animals that were intaked, how are we gonna be billed for that kind of stuff?
You're not on a limit number, and how it's developed is, yeah, that's, I'm a budget person, so I'm sure that right now, that's what I kept in mind. So I'm sure your Department of Finance is probably getting a little nervous because they don't have a dollar amount for 23, 24, as you're building this budget. So that's why I took, your animal intake changes every year, right? So you take two fiscal years prior, and that's what your intake, that's how we're gonna build the budget. So right now, I could give you tomorrow 23 and 24's number, because two fiscal years is that stagnant number, right? So I'm gonna look at 20, 21, 22, what your fiscal numbers were. Maybe it was 150 animals, maybe it was 180, and I'm gonna take that percentage over the overall animal intake, and what our expenses are, and that's gonna be your projected dollar amount. So it's gonna fluctuate, but it's gonna be pretty close to that dollar amount. And it helps you because in your previous contract, you had, if we go over this number, what are you gonna do with those animals? What are you gonna do with those animals? You have no place to take them. You should be bringing them to our shelter.
Right.
So you have unlimited number, you will pay for it based upon your animal intake percentage compared to the rest of the county, and yours is pretty low, pretty, pretty low. So historically, when I've worked in animal services, usually those numbers don't fluctuate a whole lot. I mean, you're not gonna fluctuate no more than maybe a quarter of a percentage either way, because your percentage is very, very low.
Okay, so but so just to reiterate, the 210 is not a cap, that's just the number used to come up with the cost, and it will fluctuate depending on.
That's an actual number, that 210.
We never, even though that number was 300, we were never, well, first of all, it wouldn't be a consideration, we'd still do business as normal, but we were never near that number. Because as I told, I told you on your one-on-ones, over the last two-year period, 43% of the animals we diverted back to the community without sending to animal control. Because in spite of the comments about not tracking, we do, to the number, know how many we took in and how many went to animal control, so.
Okay.
That's the whole partnership in progressive and animal services. You want to keep animals out of the shelter and get them home. So, for example, at the end of this month, I'm having a Zoom call with all the lost and found administrators from Galt all the way to all Sacramento County, because there's a lot of great lost and found administrators, that's what they call themselves, that they're volunteers in the community, and they work on social media, and they work in your communities getting dogs out into their homes and reconnecting them with their owners, so that, because you don't want animals coming in, right? So you're not getting billed for that, you're not increasing your intake.
Okay, a couple more questions. There was talk about, you know, the possibility, if we ever did want to look at, you know, having in-house, the cost was 102,000 or 105, whatever, what is. Was there, in your mind, chief, was there like a, I mean, I know the council sets policy, so I mean, I guess at any given time, the council's just like, hey, I think we need a animal service officer, and then we all thought that, but is there, in your mind, kind of a trigger that where you would think, like, as we evaluate this moving forward, in your, in your eyes, do you, do you visualize a trigger point where we think that that would be an instance where we would start considering that?
Yeah, I think if we were looking at the, from the customer service component, that we were getting a delayed response, where we were having to start to do some creative things to hold animals, maybe even start to hold them again, to get animal control down here, that would be the time and a place that I'd want to engage on that. But I want to make sure that we exhaust all our options on the front end, because I know how how quickly money goes, and so I don't want to create something where we buy up the contract for another animal control officer specific to Galt 40 hours a week, we're on the hook for that, or secondarily, then we, a year or two later, are forced to cut it. I think then we have more impacts from the customer service side if we do that. So we'll continue to monitor it. I do was here when we had the full service contract, and although nothing's ever perfect because that's just the way life is, it was a good contract, it just was unaffordable long-term for the city at that point.
Okay. This one might just be a housekeeping issue along with the one right above the item 3 I mentioned earlier about the secure holding kennels, which you cleared, that's not supposed to be in there, was the one where it talks about that for all animals, all animals collected, the city shall make efforts to return, and it talks about that the city shall fully document and all this kinds of stuff, and provide that documentation to the county and so on and so forth. It's item number two on page 5?
Yes.
So that would absolutely not apply either, right?
Correct.
Okay, because you're not intaking animals, okay? Also, another, again, housekeeping, page 12, I guess flip to it. Item 23 and 25 are basically a duplicate of each other, so, except ones like in bold print and ones not, so I don't know if that's just for the hard-to-read people. So 23 and 25 are duplicates. Exact verbiage each, each paragraph, I don't know why.
Now, why did that come?
It's just authority to execute.
Yeah, it's just nothing, okay.
So it looks like it got pasted, it looks like we were gonna switch page, it looks like, yeah, I see what happened.
Okay.
Yeah, that's easy.
And then, and then these are some specific service questions, which I'm sure you would very, very easily answer from me, and, but these were important ones that were brought to my attention. And again, I was happy.
Referring to attachment?
Yes, I'm referring to attachments, yes. So I'll be looking at attachment A, page 2, number 807, which is the stray confined Can you, can you maybe elaborate on that service a little bit? I was, I didn't quite understand that one.
So your question is about stray confined cat, what we would do for a stray confined cat?
Yeah, and what what service, because it says, it says no service, so what does that mean?
Because I'm gonna give you a little history about cats. Legally, animal shelters are not required legally to take in stray healthy cats, and most progressive shelters don't take in stray progressive cat, stray healthy cats. We do, but that's why we have this new program come February 1st. So if you have trappers out there with stray confined cats, they can deliver them to the place next door, get an appointment, spay, neuter them, and then release them back out to the community. But when we're full and there's cats, we have cat season here in the Central Valley, and what that looks like is when we have 400 or 500 cats on site, we will start turning the public away when we get too many stray cats, and our officers do not go out and pick out stray confined cats for any member of the community.
Okay, yeah, and just so you know, my wife, my wife does foster cats for a local group, and we've, yeah, we've raised many, many a cat and found them new homes. So the, and then, and then also to the, there was a question about deceased cats. I don't have the code in front of me, but it basically, the question was, or deceased, it was deceased cats or or dogs, it didn't really matter what it was, but it was, it was when they're going out and they're removed, do you guys scan them to deter, so that the, and then do any kind of outreach to figure out if they're scanned, and they are microchipped, do you then notify the owner, "Hey, we found your cat deceased"?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. And then, give me just a second here, I'm just making sure there was no other items in here.
I will tell you, sometimes, unfortunately, the animals are not in the best shape.
Yes.
Depending on the circumstances, so sometimes you won't find a microchip.
Okay, understandable for sure, yeah. That was that question, I think you answered that one. I had something here about a stray injured cat, I don't know what the question was on that, but I think that might have been it.
A stray injured cat we would take in.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, one last question is, because we had, I don't know if it's resolved yet, it might be, but we had an incident recently where we had a kind of out-of-control situation with chickens with a house in town, and there was a lot of this back and forth, whatever. You guys don't deal with any of that at all?
Nope, I'm not in the chicken business.
So that seemed to be the problem. So let me, because you're here, let me ask you, we had a resident in town that has like 100 chickens, and we've went through all the protocol with code enforcement, to a point where we're like, you know, as a senior citizen, and we can't just keep fining them, we're not gonna be able to pay the fines as it is. We have found zero help. We've, we reached out to organizations, and we found many people that said, "We'll take the chickens, but they won't come out and trap the chickens." So our code enforcement person is literally as wits' end trying to solve this. I think it might have been resolved, I don't know, Craig stepped out because he would maybe know, but for, if it has been resolved, but for future, you guys don't do.
Not aware of any animal services that goes out.
Really? So.
Usually, that's the first place everybody wants to point to, but then we go code enforcement, code enforcement, but we don't.
So it would just be on the city, just to figure out, so chickens don't fall under this contract at all?
Nope.
Okay.
They do not.
Okay, and then I did remember the other question. Animals such as like a possum or a skunk that's out, you know, nocturnal animal that's found out in the daylight, wounded, wounded, or obviously not, something's wrong with them, those are, you guys come for those animals?
Yeah, we want to test them for rabies.
Okay, because we recently had that.
They're out it, and during daylight, there's something wrong because they're not usually out in daylight.
Okay, all right. That's, that's, that's good to know. All right, and thank you for clarifying that chicken thing, so obviously that's still an issue to figure that out. I think that's, I think that's all I have. I feel like I missed maybe one question, but I feel like generally speaking.
Councilman Farmer, well, there's a, I believe there's a public comment, so if you want to keep looking, you can still come back to it.
Greg Davidson?
I can, my wife and I have been residents of Galt for over 30 years, and I can remember a time when our only recourse was to call animal control, and my concern is that anybody who's lived here for any amount of time knows that Galt is treated as the redheaded stepchild in Sacramento County, because we're so far away from all the county services. I'd like to know what type of protections are being put in place so that we're not shunted down to the bottom of the pile of animal control calls. Thank you.
I would just, if I can just respond to that comment, I think the fact that county, we call them animal control for lack of a better term, but they have a better name, has agreed to take on our business with a new methodology approach, and I think that probably says to me what I needed to say about the service that they are willing to provide this community, and that we do have that backstop for if there's just a service level that cannot be sustained by the county just based on the sheer volume of animals, that we could use that animal control-specific buy-up option if necessary. So I think that's our safety net for council and and for me and and city staff.
Thank you, sir. I think it's also stated clearly early on that this is bringing the level of services way up, in my opinion, to the level of Sacramento County equal to other cities. There's no, you know, it's, it's an up upgrade, period.
So I did find the last question. It was regarding services. It says in page 6, section K, under the spay and neuter voucher program, it notes that "The city shall additionally partner with the county to provide community programs, including but not limited to spay-neutering, microchip, vaccination clinics, feral community, cat resources, et cetera, programs designated to reduce the number of animals entering." So the question was, that was asked to me by a citizen, was, I know you mentioned about, you can bring them up there, and you guys will do all that, and that's awesome. Is there any plan, or is there any programs that we plan on doing in our community partnering with you guys to provide such things?
Yes, we have our first vaccination clinic scheduled here this month.
Yeah, March.
I can't remember which weekend.
March 30th or March 31st, right in there is, and we'll post that on social media.
It's a free vaccination clinic.
Okay.
Free microchips, free vaccinations, and we have volunteer, regular vet technicians that will come in and provide the service, and volunteer veterinarians that are coming in to provide the service at night.
Sunday, March 26, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Harvey Park.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of people, there's, we have a lot, we have a lot of cats in Galt, and cats is one of those things which you know that people are just very negligent about getting neutered, and they reproduce so fast, and pretty soon you have a huge epidemic of of cats, and so a lot of people just started under the impression, like I had a gentleman come to me, actually yesterday, he's probably in his 80s, he said, "My granddaughter found some stray cats, she's decided to keep them, but you know what, we went to the, we called up so-and-so or went to whatever, and they want to charge us $300 to get those cat fixed, so I guess we're just not gonna do it." And I said, "No, no, no, you can get those done for free." So there's a lot of people that still don't even know that those services exist.
Oh, once the word gets out, because it's, it's definitely a positive for the community. And in case many of you are not aware, there is a national veterinarian shortage, and so that's why you see services are very hard to get, even for myself, as large as we are. Spay and neuters are not your 100, $200 anymore. You're gonna pay $400 or $500.
Yeah, it could have been.
You're gonna wait five to six months to get into a veterinarian.
Sad, okay.
I have a full-time vacancy that I have the money to hire, and I can't fill it.
So would you lead me to my next question is, and this, this might go without saying, because I know if I had a contract with someone, and then if I had a contract with Mr. Vandenberg to provide, you know, coffee to his business, for example, on a regular basis, if Mr. Vandenberg, Mayor Vandenberg was to come to me and say, "Sean, are you gonna have to hire additional people to now service the contract you have with me? I'm just curious." So I mean, I'm sure it goes without saying, you have a contract, you're gonna honor it, but are you gonna, is there gonna be a necessity for you guys to bring on additional staff to handle this, this new uptick with Galt service, or do you think you're sufficient to do it now?
No, you're 2% of the animals.
Okay, so you, you're confident you can handle it? Okay.
Confident we can handle it, for sure.
Okay.
And you're gonna get the same service as Sacramento County residents, which is gonna be different, though, for your community, so there's gonna be some things that have to be worked out, because if the community here has been used to just dropping off animals at the police station, you, we can't continue with that service. They have, they can go to our shelter, which is, like you say, it was 23 miles, because I left there last, tonight, from here to there, and and we'll intake the animal, but we really have got to deliver more consistent service for the animals and for the community.
And with that said, and I know our city PIO, she left, but I think this would be, I think it goes without saying, chief, that we would definitely want to get this word out there on the city's social media pages and everywhere we can, in our monthly newsletters and emails and whatever we send out to the public in abundance, over and over, until people get the word, so we can start deflecting those calls that are gonna come to you guys, because we see like every single day, I would say every day, once a day, there's a post on social media, the big two neighborhood groups we have on on Facebook here in town, where there is something about loose dogs running around, collared, belonging to somebody, whatever. Every day, we see that, there's an animal issue posted every day, so even though we're a small town, it's a thing, so.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that's all I had. I might have missed something, but I think I can always reach out to you afterwards.
Yes, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you for answering my questions and being patient, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Farmer. Anyone else? If there's no one else, I will be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a new agreement with the Animal Care and Regulation Services with the County of Sacramento for a hundred and ninety-eight, and six, ninety-six per year, subject to further annual adjustments and approving and appropriations of fifteen thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilman Farmer. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Can I just mention one thing, just to manage the expectations? You guys have approved it, step one, thank you. And tomorrow, as soon as I get back to the office, I'll be writing this, I'll be submitting it to the board of supervisors to get approved. So it won't take effect until the board supervisor has the final signature.
Sure, that was mentioned, but thank you.
We'll definitely communicate the date, so we can explain that, and really share that out with your citizens.
And there's gonna be a transition period, so there will be folks that show up with animals, and so on and so forth. We're not gonna turn people away in that initial period. So we will work on that service delivery with, with the county.
The chief will put his, the kennels in his office.
Yeah.
Right, that's what he said.
Yes.
To me, yeah.
So, but we will, but we will continue to work with county, county animal control on that, and the outreach that you mentioned on social media. I already had the conversation with Ms. Mendez, I believe it was yesterday, so.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bed, Bedsworth, I appreciate you coming down. You, you're the director, like-
Yes.
Wow, thank you for making the trip down here.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
I love this community, too.
I promised her it was gonna be a quick meeting, but I miscalibrated slightly.
I actually, I actually just moved up here, and I wanted to move to Galt. I spend all my time here, and all my money here, and shop here. I actually ended up moving to Wilton, but I do like your community, because I lived in Houston, which is five miles east of Modesto, a small town. And I just, this reminds me of that small town feel, it's very nice.
Very good.
Well, welcome to the community, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move on to M, communication.
Done this evening.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna say something, but, and, is city clerks report?
Uh, nothing.
O is comments by staff.
None for me, we, Director Mike Selling.
Evening again, Mayor and council. Yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to bring, bring up. First is, this is groundwater awareness week. Apologies, I'm getting over a cold. And Galt, I think, as, has been said at previous council items, is a hundred percent reliant on groundwater. In fact, forty-four percent of the entire country's population is reliant upon groundwater. And to that end, per state requirements, we work together with six other agencies. The mayor actually sits on the board for the Consumer's Groundwater Authority, and we have developed a twenty-year plan to manage our groundwater to be sustainable. So I think that we're, you know, well-positioned to ensure that, and we'll have some upcoming projects probably in the next couple of years or so. But just wanted to bring that to light for everybody. And then, on the other side of, of water, I don't know if people are watching the forecasts, but we've got another one of these atmospheric river situations that we're gonna be facing here in the coming days through the weekend. So, and the thing is, is it's, it's probably gonna melt some of the snow at the lower elevations. We've gotten a lot of snow lately, it's been cold, but this is a little bit warmer, it's not a full-on pineapple express situation, so I don't want anybody to necessarily panic. But it is probably gonna melt some of that snow and, and cause some additional runoff down the rivers and stuff, to the point where I think some of them will be at monitor stage at least. So anyway, we're, we're watching that and preparing for that, and so just wanted to remind residents, if there's anything you can do to kind of clean up any debris or anything in your yards or gutters, it'll, it'll definitely help the situation. So with that, thank you so much.
Mike, well, there'll be, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
I just want to know, as you're monitoring the situation, I know that the brunettes coming in Friday, I'm just concerned with, you know, over the weekend, public works are, you know, not really here. Is there any kind of thought of the need for sandbags, or maybe that of, make, think of that maybe available?
Yeah, we will probably put some more sand out, just so it's there for folks if they need it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would expect that. You'll probably see some posts on social media and whatnot, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we planned some coordination, and we'll work with, with Amy, to get some, some notification out, and of course, PD, too. So, but yeah, I mean, we'll be on standby, standby and whatnot. And I think there are some pretty significant winds forecast, too, which is, is kind of the scarier part, as far as the trees and stuff go, so.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Anyway, just kind of wanted to make, make folks aware of that, thanks.
Um, let's see. Well, first of all, thank you for the approval for the animal control thing. I think that's an operational move that my staff, the officers, at least one in the room, we appreciate. It's gonna be a more effective service. Next meeting, I'll be bringing our annual report to you, in advance of the request to bring it to the chamber. I think it's important that you get it first, so I will be before you for that. And then to piggyback on what Mike said about this first storm, which is a little warmer, I think when you have about two hundred percent of normal snow, I think this is a challenge we're gonna have during the entire melt, and we're gonna be challenged with that consumeness issue in ninety-nine, time and time again, until we get, you know, probably June or something, until it all melts. So more to come on that, but we are on daily phone calls with NWS and county, and working with public works, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
That's it for staff comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Next is comments by city council members, future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank your staff, all staff for their hard work and their detailed reports. I also like to thank you, everyone come to the council as a public. I'd like to thank you for the public comments. Especially thank you, Bob Elliott, Chris Cosman, Greg Davidson, Carol Smith, and Phyllis Johnson. Thank you for your comments coming to the podium to give us kind of feedback. This event, I'd like to report, I went to, I attended the chamber honorary business of the month. Congratulations to Mark Wantoing. Thank you for you being a longtime community member. And I also, I did discuss with Mr. Heinz, former mayor Barbara Payne, she'd like to attend next meeting in, in the chamber. So I would like to ask the, if we can have a proclamation now for her, and I would ask, I'd like to ask for my colleagues.
She's busy?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this month is, um, what is it?
Women's History Month?
Women's History Month, so it'd be a, a nice way to honor her in the correct month for her leadership in Galt. Heck, she put us on the map. It was, we learned that this evening.
Anybody that can serve twelve years as a city councilor.
All right. Council, Councilman Papino?
I don't get out of the mold of repeating the same stuff every week. And so, cool story, I was out for a walk last night with my wife, and this truck, it's excessively lifted with great big tires, tinted windows all the way around, modified exhaust, all that usual stuff, rolls the stop sign, and immediately guns it up to about fifty-five, sixty, in a forty-five. And I was like, yeah, what an idiot. And then did my heart good when PD car comes around the corner, and right behind him, so. Took me back to the days of writing very long continuation page tickets, so.
See, now, there's a success story of being at the right place at the right time. I'm gonna repeat that story every time we're not at the right place, so, yeah. That being said, you can't always be there, but did my heart good last night, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Just to keep this short, and it's been a long meeting, thanks to the public comments, Mr. Brosman, Ms., Ms. Johnson, Bob Elliott, of course. Thank you, Bob, for what you continue to do for our seniors, and fighting for, for them. I would like to see if we could actually, with what Bob mentioned, I met with that gentleman from Area Four, it's the two-one-one. I didn't even know such a thing existed. It's actually really cool, you can dial two-one-one, if you're, and they give you, they'll help you find anything from rent relief to, you know, anyways. It's a great program out of Sac County. They would like to come do a presentation, so maybe in the near future, if we can fit them in on a, on a day where we don't have a ton of things on the agenda, it'd be nice to have them come give a presentation. I think it'd be very informational for seniors and people in town to know what they, what they provide. So is that something the council would?
I'm quite interested myself.
Okay. And then the other item is, in light of the, the presentation from the chamber, I would very much like to have that be brought back when we discuss the ARPA funds. I would like that to be a part of the conversation. I would also like, as I mentioned earlier, that as part of that conversation, if we could have some of the TOT money, like, if we could show us where we use our TOT money now, what it's been traditionally spent on historically, how much we bring in, all that kinds of stuff, that would be very helpful to the conversation for me, at least, too. So I just, again, want that to be brought back as an informal agenda item with, maybe with the other stuff, I don't know.
Agreed. And the TOT, we, you know, we just had the grand opening for the new hotel, so if there's maybe some reasonable estimates of what that could add to the budget. We need one more person?
You're talking about making this as a part of the discussion of-
Making what the chamber proposed an agenda item.
I, I thought you said as, as part of the-
It could be a conjunction with, because I think we're gonna have, correct me if I'm wrong, unless that's not gonna be soon, but I think there's gonna be some discussion on additional ARPA money. But that's not, if that's a conversation that's gonna be a while, then I would like to see this back a little sooner, but I just want to see this brought back. That's all I'm saying, as, as a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, we have-
That I, I think they have a bit of work to do, but yeah.
Okay, that's three. Okay, very good. Is it all, Mr. Farmer?
That's it. That's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I'll just dovetail onto that. I, I would like, at least, for the proposal and the, the evolution of the proposal, because I don't think this is the last that we've seen of, of, of it, and I'm sure there's gonna be some fine tuning going on, that that be part of our budget development discussions. We can talk about ARPA, and I've, I've told this to the chamber people that I've met with, we could talk about it all we want, but unless there's a commitment from the city at some level of ongoing funds, then I think it's for naught. I mean, do I think they'll be successful? Absolutely. But what is the commitment of the city? And what are we gonna do to make that commitment happen? So that, so my point is this, I want to see that as part of our budget discussions, as opposed, as opposed to just ARPA funding. Because we can, we could fund it immediately, but, you know, the right thing to do, I think, is to make it part of what we do as a city, so. So I say that to say, went to the Saturday market also this weekend, and I texted Armando and, and told him what an awesome job I think they did. Lots of people out there, very well done. And so I, I, I'm looking forward to the future. We got out of there before the rain came, but it was very well-attended, and, and some of the additions that were, that were done in terms of the antique and the garage sale part, was actually fun to, to go through, and it was pretty entertaining. So good work by staff, and Jackie was out there running around like crazy, but it was, it was very well-done. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. I would echo your comments. I went down to the market as well, and it was cold, and I was there very early, but there was already a lot of people. They had good morning down there, so it was a lot of good free advertisement. It was nice to see a wider variety of vendors, and I liked how they rearranged the street, if you will, to make it feel like it flowed, and there wasn't people left out on the island, so that, that was really nice to see. I just, one of my pages on my browser is the, the snow, and there's, right now, a Tahoe, Tahoe Donner Pass is forty-two feet of snow, so certainly a little warm water's gonna add up quickly. And to that effect, I drive down Lower Sack all the time, and there's seven to ten trees that have fallen over just because they can't stand up in mud. So I'm actually a little concerned about what's gonna happen there physically, if the trees start moving down towards the bridge. I, I mean that sincerely. There's a lot of waste in the, in that lower portion, and there's a lot of, there's standing water already, and you can see where some of the trees just simply, just eased over out of, out of a lack of support for themselves. So with all of that, I thank you very much for the public comment. It is much more powerful than people realize, because it's the one place you can talk to everybody all at the same time, and nobody can get away with not listening to you. So with that, I'll end the meeting at nine oh five. Thank you, everyone.